To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Fire evacuation announcement. Behind you is the fire evacuation doors and also down these set of doors and downstairs and out through the back. And please, if we have an evacuation, please get away as far away from building as you possibly can. Will Secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Kieran Majmadar.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Gorillo is absent. Christian D. Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis.
Here.
Thank you. The record showed that all seven regular members are here and two of the alternates, one alternate, absent. Make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. Is there any discussion or amendments on the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. On page two, the third paragraph down, it's talking about the CROG study. And it just says, she stated that there is more pedestrian traffic on 220 and 190. It should show Route 220 and Route 190 and maybe make some kind of note because the rest of it may look just like an address 10 years from now to somebody who reads these. Thank you.
So I guess that's pretty prevalent throughout the minutes and maybe somewhere we want to make a note, wherever that's mentioned, 220 and 190, those are routes 220 and 190?
And, oh, excuse me, one.
Yeah. Let me know when you guys are ready. Yeah, it's pretty prevalent throughout that whole block. And you had something else?
Yeah, also where it says Route 190 crosses over 91. It should say I-91, just as a reference. Thank you.
Any discussion on the suggested amendments to the minutes?
Yep.
Seeing that, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, which would be in the traffic impact study part, any reference to I-90, 190 and 220 should be Route 190, 220, and also I-91. All those in favor, flag, raising, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that.
One abstention.
Two abstentions, really. Commissioner Petronella and Commissioner Majmadar have abstained. Everyone else has approved the minutes as amended. Yeah, so it'd be Commissioner Alamo, DeGray, Fiore, Higley, Holinsky, D'Antonio, and Lefakis, all approved. We're running a little slow because we don't have a recording secretary anymore. So they're taking all the recording notes. So we slowed it down just a notch. So we don't want to miss anything for the minutes. Okay. Town Attorney Report, I think we all received something here, just a little bit of update, some of the current cases. Now move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to the planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may still be pending. It also includes any decisions that are in legal pending status. So seeing that, is there anyone who would like to come up and talk about anything in the regular part of the planning and zoning meeting? Is there anyone who would like to come up and talk about anything in the regular part of the planning and zoning meeting? For the last time, just to make sure. Anyone seen that? Regular public participation is closed. Move on to Section 7, bond releases, PH 2849.
Mr. Chairman, the zoning enforcement officer, Rochelli, submitted a memo to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is, oop, I just lost my page. Sorry about that. This is a request for a landscaping and ENS bond release for 157 South Road, which was National Fleet Leasing. And he has put a motion in, so it was for $2,450 for the site restoration bond, which, if you recall, we actually did away with that about a year or so ago. And $34,500 for a landscape bond and $3,000. I'm sorry. The site restoration bond was the $34,500, and the sediment control bond was $2,450. So there is a motion there on.
Yep.
For you to read, unless you have other questions.
Yeah. Is there any questions on this bond release?
No.
Any questions looking down this end? Everybody's. Secretary, please read the motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $2,450, the site restoration bond in the amount of $34,500, and the landscape bond in the amount of $3,000 to National Fleet Leasing LLC for public hearing number 2849, located at 157 South Road, MAP 59, Lot 0082.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions? Seen them? Commissioner Holinsky?
Did you say 59? Or I have 55 on my motion. Yeah, MAP number.
157.
I thought you said 59.
I got MAP 55.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It should read 55, I think.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. We do have, we have MAP 55, Lot 82.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Great.
Seeing no other questions or concerns, the secretary call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Kieran Majmadar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
But the record indicates that it was unanimous, seven, nothing, to release this bond. Now we're going to move on to new public hearings, whenever the secretary's ready. XZA 3041.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, July 14, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. XZA number 3041, text amendment for section 6.20 to require special permits for warehouses and distribution buildings equal to or greater than 200,000 square feet in an industrial zone.
Thank you. The applicant, which is basically staff, care to comment on this?
Well, it's actually the town. I'm just representing the town.
Yep.
So, so the commission actually spoke about this on a number of occasions, trying to figure out how best to decipher where, you know, where to, well, let me restart. The citizens requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission look at setting a minimum square footage for, or a maximum square footage for warehouse distribution centers that would adhere to the site plan approval. And anything after that number would be requiring a special permit. After much discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission did decide to set the maximum size at 200,000 square feet. And so anything greater than 200,000 square feet will require a special permit. This will give the commission much more leeway for review and will give the opportunity for the public to speak in favor or against an application, or at least to state their concerns.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, have any further questions? We've kind of went around and around, debated this, but I think pretty much there's any, Commissioner D'Antonio?
Just a logistics comment about the formatting. So I don't know if it's just highlighted on, in our packet for emphasis, but I would just ask for clarification when it goes in the regulations that the formatting's consistent.
Oh, absolutely.
And there's an asterisk that's used too, which is used for a different meaning in the same table. So I would just avoid the use of the asterisk as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah. Was the update that we received on our desk tonight?
Yes.
It's not the same as our packet.
I think.
That was just guidelines for reasonings.
Oh, thank you.
If you make a decision.
Thank you.
Yes, the only change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Should we open it up for comments from the public? Any other questions at this point? Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak for or against this text amendment?
Can I say my question first?
Please, come on up.
Is that anybody else?
Yeah. You want to pull that a little bit closer?
Yeah.
Is the red button on? Yeah. Yeah. It sounds like it's on.
Linda Astapoff, 109 Cottage Road. I'm very much in favor of the text amendment.
Thank you.
I'd also like to quickly raise a couple of other changes the town could possibly consider that would be helpful. One is to make adherence to all Connecticut guidelines for stormwater and drainage mandatory for all projects. The next is to allow farmland to be converted only to single-family residential units without a special permit. And the third is to add a section to the website listing resources for residents and explaining procedures to residents who have a concern regarding a proposed project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Lori Parker?
I got the first one, first two. Hi, Lori Parker, 105 Cottage Road. I just want to voice my full support for the text amendment. I think it's a fabulous idea, and I'm very thankful for you all listening and considering this and give it my full support.
Thank you. Angela and Jeff Foss, you know, if you guys would come up separately or together, doesn't matter.
First time.
No.
And it won't be the last time, right?
I'll hold the pen.
Angela Foss, 16 Crescent Beach Drive. I applaud you. A big applause. I know that this was not an easy decision on your part. I know that you had, I'm sure, lots of things going through your mind when it comes to our town and needing extra tax income. But I am thrilled that you have made such a wise decision. Of course, you know me, so I have an extra, like, I have a couple of extra things I was going to request. And of course, you know, I know that things will be changed because I know that your regulations are probably up for renewal, I would assume. So when it comes to this whole section of industrial warehousing, and down the bottom, very last part of it, on page 55 of your regs, it says wholesale warehousing and distribution facilities. So as we know, in a new era with lots of trucking, there might, this might be a spot for you guys to actually have a different place for places that are going to have a certain number of docking stations because this wholesale warehousing distribution facility is not really what we're talking about. It's really not. So you have, on here, you have a site plan required for all the industrial parts of that. So it would be awesome if anybody who comes before you and says they would like a wholesale warehousing distribution facility, it would be a distribution regular that we're used to instead of something that is really more like a trucking facility. So if there could be something specific for that and a special permit required in those cases would be really helpful. I respectfully request that. And the other section, I know I've talked about this over and over again, but if somebody is going to put in an industrial building and they just want to fall under that category, it would be really imperative to find out what is going to go in that building. I know I've said this numerous times. I'm going to read from your section 6 dot 20 dot 1. Number one, the storage of agricultural products which are produced or grown on the farm premises is a use by right and requires no approvals under those regulations. So if someone's got a farm and they're producing some kind of milk product or dairy product, and it's on their farm and they're raising those cows, that's, doesn't need a special permit. But the storage of, the storage of products grown or produced off the farm premises does require a special permit. So if you don't know that there's going to be some kind of a dairy product distributor in one of these trucking facilities, then you don't know that they require a special permit. So maybe somewhere in your regs, when it comes to something like this, it'd be important to know who the tenants are going to be. But I have to applaud you. I'm thrilled with your, you know, your forethought here. I do appreciate all of your forethought. Okay? Thank you.
Dr. Fossen, anyone else like to speak for or against this text change? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you for, and the public comment. Any other response? Nope. Everybody's all set? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Alamo, seconded by Commissioner Higley to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The record showed it was unanimous to close the public hearing. With that, we'll have a motion to approve.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve XZA number 3041, text amendment application to section 6.20 and 6.20.1 to require a special permit for any warehouse distribution center equal to or greater than 200,000 square feet in size, town of Enfield applicant.
Thank you. Motion made by Secretary Petronella. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, roll call, please.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Kieran Majmadar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
The record shows unanimous, seven, nothing, and the reasons for approval. We have four reasons for approval. One, by seeking to decrease, first of all, meets the intent of our POCD, by seeking to decrease traffic along the corridors of Route 190, 220, and the rest of I-91. It will offer greater oversight with larger developments with regard to potential neighborhood environmental impacts in traffic. It will offer citizens the opportunity to comment on the development with greater confidence regarding the land use application process, and it will promote the economic development by preserving, hopefully preserving neighborhoods. And that's the reasons why we approve this text change. Thank you.
Can you just please state the effective date? Could you state the effective date, please?
Effective date would be two weeks out from today. Usually, that's usually our standard practice, two weeks. So I don't have a calendar on me. 28th?
28.
28th. And I'm just going to, spare me, I got to get this back to you.
Really? Because that's our next, that's our next meeting.
Now we're moving on to old public hearings, PH 3040 MA, which I don't think we have to reread because basically that we just, we just tabled that public hearing. But I will ask for a motion to take it off the table, just to be correct in motion. Motion made by Commissioner Holinsky, seconded by Commissioner Majmadar to take PH 3040A off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
The record show unanimous decision to continue on with public hearing, 3040 MA, 1297 Enfield Street Zone Change. Would the applicant and representatives care to come forward?
Mr. Chair, for the record, I'll be recusing myself from this application.
For the record, Commissioner Petronella is going to recuse himself. So Commissioner Lefakis will be stepping in in his place. Commissioner D'Antonio will be a backup. Commissioner Majmadar has his right to reclaim his position for this hearing. He feels that he has caught himself up with all the materials, the notes. I'd take it he probably watched a YouTube video from last meeting. So he's claiming his right to sit in from this point on, with Commissioner D'Antonio now stepping back as a backup. Before we begin, Lori, is it now a good time before attorney Landelina starts that we give a overview of some of the items we discussed as far as the petition, et cetera, et cetera?
Certainly, we could do that.
Yes, please.
Let Carl find his paperwork. So there were a number of questions that were asked at the last meeting, one of which was whether or not the petition was valid. And we've been going back and forth and looking at case law and reading the statute. And we have, I thought we had come to a conclusion the other day, but then I started reading it again, and I read another case, case history. So we're still working on it. The question is, is whether or not it is, the petition needs to be signed by 20% of the properties, by the owners of 20% of the properties within the 500-foot buffer area, or 20% of the area of the buffer area. And the case law actually goes back and forth and contradicts itself. So we're still kind of working on that. I do want to say that I believe that we have received another six signatures this afternoon. So I haven't even looked at those. So this, we're not closing this tonight. We're not going to make a decision as to whether the petition is valid or not. I just want, so we're just going to move forward with that.
Yeah. So now we've accepted all the signatures. They haven't been verified yet.
Right.
But every petition is all lumped in as one. And we will not be voting tonight because we don't know whether we need a majority or a supermajority at this point in time. Town staff and legal staff is still reviewing this issue. So we will continue on in, for the applicant and for the residents and for ourselves. We don't want to waste time. But we will not be voting tonight. We will be leaving this open again for the following meeting because we haven't received the illegal advice we need yet or to move forward. So that's one of the issues.
So one of the other issues was whether the STD zone allows residential, allows to be used in the residential zone. So I started looking up our past regulations. And I didn't go back before 1975, but in the 1975 regulations, the STD was its own chapter and included wording about that it could be used in the HR 33 because it clarified that it had to meet the HR 33 requirements if it actually, you know, fell in the historic district area. So that was the same until 2001, when they did a complete rewrite of the regulations. And what happened at that point is they, they were trying to combine sections and make, and simplify the regulation so they were, so it flowed easier. At that point, the STD regulations were put into the business district, but there was no discussion or no apparent discussion that they were trying to take the residential component out of it. They just kind of streamlined it and placed it there. They also placed the Thompsonville regulations in that section and the King Street overlay section in that, in that section. And I think it looks like they were doing it to discombine overlay districts and in the same area of the regulations. So we're still looking at that as well. I did find something in, and I'm not sure if I have it. No, I did not. So I did find something in the current plan of conservation and development that talks about the STD. And it certainly implies that the residential component is in there, and that was in 2011, even though it was still in the business district. So in business district regulations. So again, we're still trying to clarify that. There's really no minutes that I've found about the discussions that were had about the change of regulations. The, this, the CROG referral had four items on it that were very specific to changing the regulations, and the STD were not part of it. So that's what I've found to date, still looking. And so I'm just, you know.
So in a nutshell, this commission has some discretion on this particular issue, whether to follow past precedent or not. And we haven't discussed that as a group yet. We wanted to continue this whole process without having discussion yet. But again, because the STD that is listed in the business section was used once or twice already for other applications in the past. So we, some precedent has been set. But again, this is a new commission with a lot of new members and new leadership. So we might be taking a look at that. We haven't had that discussion here as a body. And I don't recommend that we do that tonight yet. But we wanted to bring that light to you that we still have that avenue of not accepting that if we so desire. That is in our purview to do so. And we will be addressing this part of the whole in our regulations when we do our rewrites come this holiday. Because we recognize going forward, it's not fair to any future commissions to be put in this particular position with the STD and where it is in our regulations. So we will be addressing that holiday time when we get to that point after POCD. So I hope I explained that part well enough, Lori and I. So Lori, is one other thing we needed to talk about, and that is whether we decide to accept a master plan or a site plan?
I think that might be covered with Mr. Landelina's conversation with you.
Okay. So we might get back to that because there are some questions were raised about not having what we would call a traditional site plan. But we will, we will address that later on. So having said that, I think we've brought everybody up to snuff in pretty much any, everything. I know some of you guys, I'm looking at your face, I know you have some questions and concerns. But I think it's imperative that we proceed. We can always get back to these questions and concerns because we want to keep this process moving.
Okay.
So having said that, I think, didn't want to tie you up, we felt that was appropriate to get that out of the way first.
Absolutely.
So please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. For the record, attorney Carl Landelina, representing the applicants, Felician Sisters of North America. Seated to my right is Kristen Anderson from the Community Builders, the most likely developer of this project, should it be approved. And to her right is Bridget Armstrong, who I introduced last time as well, a member of the Felician Sisters family. Just, just because we just spoke about several items, just for the record, I understand the concern over whether this is inappropriate, if the zone change to STD is appropriate, given its location within a certain section of the regulations. And I think, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, you've mentioned this, less than a year ago, you did act, this commission did act on a, on a similar proposal for a property, well, certainly within the residential zone. The other thing I would say is, some of you will remember because you were here and some are new, we did have an informal, and I mentioned this last time, with the commission. And I see at least four members who were there that night. So I know there are some new members, but five with, I think, Mr. Lefakis, you were there that night as well. So, but to just put that on the record.
Yep. Thank you.
The other thing, I will work, well, I will discuss with the town attorney and I guess staff in terms of the petition. My view is it's very clear from the case law and, and the preeminent expert on zoning law in the state of Connecticut, Judge Robert Fuller, who was on the bench for many years and then wrote a three-volume treatise on zoning law. And he's often cited in cases right from his book. And the most recent case that discusses sort of this kind of issue is a 20,000, 2022 case that just came out. And he has quoted verbatim on this issue in his book. So I just wanted to state that for the record. So, moving on to new material. So last, two weeks ago, we got asked some great questions and some great concerns were raised by the commission and members of the public. And one of the things that we did during the last two weeks, and I guess if we can go to the first slide, we changed our zone change request and backed it away several hundred feet from Enfield Street. And you'll see the new proposed zone right there. So the front, several hundred feet of the parcel will remain. We propose to remain in the HR 33. This is everything that is within the historic district. And one of the reasons we discussed this is that, you know, I understand the public's concerns about the possibility of us developing within the historic district. And as, as you well And as you well know, that's not something that we could do without going to the Historic District Commission. But since there seemed to be some, not confusion, but some concern about that and the HR 33, we all know that they are not the same. They are different. But, but to allay any concerns that people might have, we backed up the request for a zone change into that blue area and the, I don't know, I'm not good with colors that aren't, you know, with the pink area, I guess will remain. Now, it's obviously not a straight line, as you can see, because what we've done is, you know, the Orrin Thompson House was included and has always been included in the historic district, so that's been taken out. The St. Felix Residence, which are attached to and to the rear of the Orrin Thompson.
St. Francis.
St. Francis, I'm sorry. Too many F. Saints in this project, but St. Francis House, which is the, to the rear of the Orrin Thompson House, which this commission approved many years ago for 22 units of senior housing, that entire area has been taken out, as well as the Montessori School. So the Sisters have no intention of disturbing anything in the historic district as well as the Montessori School property. So that's been taken out. So what's left is the areas that we, with your permission, obviously, at this and another set of applications, should we get to that point, with your permission, would develop into the 250-some-odd units of multi-generational housing that we discussed last time. So that's one thing that we have done. Now, obviously, statute requires that this map be on file at the town clerk's office for 10 days. So in addition to the other reasons why this needs to be continued, this is certainly another one. And I assume staff will do that tomorrow or, all right, so we'll be looking at the 28th?
Yes.
You know, at least. And so, but anyway, that's our new zone change plan. So the next thing I think you were handed is probably an update on the traffic report. You can peruse that at your leisure. Obviously, we, given the questions that were asked last, two weeks ago about the traffic report, you know, using data from 2016 and some other concerns raised not only by this commission, by members of the public, and I applaud the public for reading traffic studies. I get paid to read them, and I don't like to do it. And we would have had our traffic engineer here today. He's out this week, so, but he will be available if there's any more questions generated after you guys and staff, and certainly the public will have access to this additional information as well. So those are the two new documents. So moving on, what I thought we would now do was to, and Commissioner DeGray asked a couple of pointed questions about the regulation, you know, have you met the, so let's just go through, and I'll explain to you, at least in my view, how we do that. So if you take a look at Section 5.60.1, it has A through H, a number of criteria which are, must be met in order for you to approve this request. The first two are pretty self-explanatory. The buildings must contain a gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or more between the convent and the St. Felix Center, which is probably part of our first phase, there's 158, 157 square feet of gross floor area. So we meet that. The area must contain at least five acres of contiguous land. You've seen our plans. There are 26 and change, I believe, acres. So we meet that. The next one, which I think is the question that Commissioner DeGray asked specifically, the buildings or building must have a vacancy rate of 80% or more of the existing gross floor area for a continuous period of 24 months or more immediately preceding the date of the application. So I spoke to the town attorney and staff about how would you calculate this? Because it uses some, it uses, for example, the term vacancy rate. So we discussed how we would do that. You know, there are, as we said, there's 150 rooms or 158 rooms.
145.
145, excuse me.
In the convent and then another 20.
20. Right, yeah. So we had 145, you know, rooms that were being occupied at one time in the heyday, so to speak, although probably not appropriate. And then there are, you know, 22 residences in the St. Francis facility. So anyway, we calculated, now, and most of your other projects, I assume, like Blair Manor was completely empty, the state had withdrawn their license, so there was no one there. Bigelow Commons, as I remember back in the 80s, I don't think there was any, you know, so those are very easy to calculate. We've got 24 rooms that are currently occupied in the convent. So we did a calculation based upon what we determined the vacancy rate to mean, and based upon that, in the entirely vacant space at the St. Felix Center, we've come up with a total square footage of both buildings at 158, 157, and a occupied or vacant space between the two buildings of 135, 204 for an occupancy, vacancy rate, excuse me, of 85%. And that has been for more than two years. So I can provide this simple calculation to staff.
Please, please do.
Yep. So in our view, we've met subsection C. Now, moving on to D, is substantial inability to develop the project, project with a capital P, under the provisions of any other zoning district. So what I went through, now, the project is for a multifamily, intergenerational residential housing project. So that's the project. So the, as I see this, this is not the inability to develop the land in any other way. It's the inability to develop the land in the way that you propose to do so, which is the project. Hence, as I said before, so what I did is I went through and I looked at the sections in the regulations, and most of them would not apply in the HR 33 anyway, and where sort of these multifamily residential uses would be permitted. The first one I went through is, is the senior residential housing under Section 4.40.4, which you can find on page 39 at Sec. of your regulations. So if you look at, and you can look at this at your, at your leisure, but this is essentially designed with a density, depending on your zone, of three units or less. So depending on the zone you're in, you can have three, a density of three units an acre. As you get to the larger R44, it might be two, and then R88, one per acre. And it uses language regarding, well, the maximum height is 24 feet. The minimum square footage for a unit is 900 square feet. And it talks about a common interest community and creating an association. So that's sort of like, you know, we used to call those condo projects, so to speak, even if they're standalone. Now, this, we call them in common interest communities. So that would not be an appropriate way to get this project started. The next one I went and looked at was Section 4.70 on page 48 of your regulations, and this is, this is sort of a catch-all. It's called the special residential development. And that includes three types of development. One is the single-family open space subdivision. Now, under the R, HR 33, we could, in fact, sell this land to a developer who would tear down everything there and, and, you know, build 20 houses or so, but that's not the vision of the Sisters, and we have no interest in doing a single-family type of subdivision whatsoever. The other is the senior residential development, which I think we just talked about, and the other is the multifamily housing district. Now, in the multifamily housing district, you need 60 minimum acres, so we don't fit that either. This is sort of the same discussion we had there in that informal conference when we laid this out. And then the last one, interestingly, okay, and, you know, sometimes as a zoning attorney, when we've got something that doesn't fit, we try to create something. This one sounds, it was created for a special project, a one-off or maybe one or two, the large flexible residential housing, all right, which requires 25 or more acres, which we have, but it has to have area that's zoned both in the residential and commercial area, and has to be within the 91 corridor. Sounds to me like someone said, oh, we got a couple of those that might work, and that's about it. But that's okay, because I, I did, I had a case on a similar kind of thing to the Supreme Court, and they said, yeah, it's okay to create a regulation that only works on two or three properties. You know, you don't, you want a few of them, but you don't want a lot of them. And I assume you don't want one of these on Enfield Street on the Felician Sisters campus. So that was sort of what we did, and we went through that analysis, and I think that we can make a showing that we have an inability to develop this project under the provisions of any other zoning district. If we had that ability, instead of asking for the SDD, we would ask for, change to the R44 or the R88 or one of the R33 or something like that. So we looked at that, didn't work, and I think that the commission recognized that, and so that's why we're here. All right. E says, "The proposal will provide substantial benefit to the town and immediate neighborhood." Now, you've heard a lot of testimony from the neighbors that they don't believe we can meet that. And, you know, I understand it, and, you know, I respectfully disagree, but, you know, that's for this commission to decide. So what is the benefit overall to the town of Enfield? All right. I think this is going to provide much-needed, more affordable multifamily housing and apartments than you currently have. I know there's been a lot of big projects recently, you know, we represented at least one of those developers, and, you know, those fit into what I, what we routinely call the luxury apartment market. That's not what we're trying to do here, you know, with rents that probably far exceed $2,000 a month. You know, that's not the market, so to speak, that the Sisters intend to, to serve. The other thing is that with this proposal, it keeps intact those great buildings on Enfield Street. And everyone, or most people came up last two weeks ago and talked about the history of the Felician Sisters. I think most of them agreed that this is nothing, their objections had nothing to do with the Felician Sisters or the buildings. It's a great campus. It's a great site. They disagree with, with, I guess, the density or the fact that, you know, it's not all seniors that we intend to service there. But I can't think of any other way of developing this project that would not include tearing down those buildings. Those buildings are going to stay. There's a 99-year proposed lease between the Community Builders and the Felician Sisters. So, you know, unless someone comes in and tries to convince you 50 years from now to allow them to tear down those buildings, it's not going to happen on Felician Sisters and TCB's watch, which is not going to happen. So I think that's a benefit to the town, because it's a beautiful campus and it's a, so it does provide those, those affordable units. I think that, you know, based upon the studies that have been done and you're aware of, you know, you've got an aging population, you rely very heavily on your retail taxable properties on your grand list, and that single-family homes aren't everyone's dream like they were 30 or 40 years ago. People want to live in apartments and not have the hassle of mowing lawns or whatever goes along with, with those single-family houses. The other thing there is going to be, this property is essentially non-taxable now, if this product is developed, and it will be taxable. And I know that a few people asked questions last month, well, how much or that, and I think we did state, on similar projects that TCB manages throughout this area, it's approximately $1,000 per unit. But obviously, that will be, when the, if the project gets built, that'll be up to the assessor to determine that, but it will turn from a non-taxable project into a taxable project. So maybe better than building a 500,000-square-foot warehouse? I don't know. I'll leave that to your discretion. So we think there will be a substantial benefit to the town and the immediate neighborhood because they'll still, the streetscape is not going to change. When you drive by, to the extent you can see anything with all those large maples or elms or what, I'm not a arborist, out front, that's, that's, the view is going to be the same. So everything is going to be developed between 91 and the buildings that are there. So I don't think there's any harm that'll come in terms of, to the immediate neighborhood from the building in terms of, you know, visual aspects. E, or excuse me, F says, "The proposal exhibits compatibility," now, that's a word I want to talk about, "with the character and density of land use abutting the site." Okay. First of all, the word "character" is a dirty word now, apparently according to the state legislature, and staff may have informed you of this. You can't judge anything on "character" anymore. I think it's a lousy stat, you know, change, because "character" is meaningful. But, but in any way, leaving the property the way it is and building some units in the back is going to retain the character more than, than, than not. And if we look at the density of the land uses abutting the site, so remember now, we already have on this property about 170 units. We've already got this. Those are there. And they've been in, the neighbors have been living, living in harmony with those, the residents of those 170 units, the first 148 for almost 90 years, and the last 22 since the St. Francis was built. I don't know how long ago that was, within the last 10 years or 15 years or so. So, and we've got next door a assisted-living facility with, I believe, 70 occupants, you know? And we are not changing the character or the uses of this property. We're still going to have a religious use. There's still going to be the educational use, which has been with the Sisters probably since the inception, and, you know, there was a high school there, OLA. You guys know the history more than I do. I mean, you, you've lived in this town. And there's always been a residential component. So those three components are going to remain. We're not changing, it's not like we're asking to turn this into a business or retail use or anything that's out of character with, with the area. We're going to remain a residential use, and those other two uses are going to remain. And that was one of the reasons we carved out the Montessori School from our zone change to ensure that that use remains and is not touched, wouldn't be able to be touched. And the Community Builders have been around for 50 years. They intend to be around for a very long time. But people say, well, what if they give it, well, this, I mean, anything can be bought and sold at any time. We all know that. You know, we've got a promise of a 99-year ground lease. We've got a company that's been around for 50 years. They're in it for the long haul, but, you know, anything could happen. So I don't know what the next guy might do, if there ever is a next guy, you know? But I think the situation here, given the density, now, there are single-family homes across the street on South Road and on Enfield Street. There's no, you know, but our view is if the uses that are there now are compatible, that- know, but our view is if the uses that are there now are compatible, that adding essentially 80 more units, I don't believe that's going to be any less compatible than what we're, than what is there now. So, that really deals with G as well. "The proposal exhibits compatibility with zoning districts adjacent to the site." Well, you know, we're all, mostly the properties there are in the HR 33, so again, we think we are compatible with those, given the uses being undergone in each of those districts. And then, "The proposal is compatible with the plan of conservation development." I think I, I mentioned last time and I handed out materials to you where I drew some direct language from the plan of conservation development and also the state plan of conservation development, so that's already in the record, so I don't feel the need to go any further on that. So, anything else?
Yeah, we just talked about that, yeah.
I can answer questions.
Yeah, so, at this point, there were many questions raised last time and we want to answer all of them directly. So, Ms. Anderson and Ms. Armstrong will take care of that if they leave any holes because I've got copious notes from that. And before I turn it over, Commissioner Maj Madar, congratulations for sitting through three hours of that. Did you do it in one sitting or, because I, it was, there was a lot there, so, but thank you anyway, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. So, thank you so much again for giving us this opportunity to come back and answer some of the questions and, you know, allow us to sort of put the trust in the commission on the evaluation of the project and so we really appreciate the time to, to answer all the questions that come up now and had came up last week. So, the first question-
There'll be more, by the way.
Yeah, exactly. So, we'll cover what was last week and then hopefully there's time for more. So the first question that we had noted from last week, Commissioner DeGray, you had asked the question about the, the shortage of 10,000 units that was in the narrative. So that stat came from a preliminary working draft of the POCD that is being proposed that was dated on July 8th, 2021.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you. That has not been accepted, so we can't discuss that.
No, I understand, so, but this is where the data table came from. So there's a data table that's based on census data that's in there, that is looking at that. So I'm not speaking about any of the, the recommendations or merits to that, but in the data table, there's census data that identifies the income brackets of current Enfield residents and the number of rental housing units within Enfield that match those different data brackets. And that's where it calculates a shortage of rental units based on the incomes of Enfield residents. So, it was Table 15B in that document. The other question I think Carl answered, but just to reiterate, was clarifying the vacancy rate. And so, as Carl pointed out, there's currently 158,157 square feet, gross square feet on the property. 135,204 of that is vacant, which comes out to a vacancy rate of 85%. Another question that had come up is what happens to the property if the Felician Sisters were to sell and a new developer takes down those buildings? So, it would be unclear to me and, and, you know, maybe this is a question more for Carl about if somebody were to come in and propose a whole new plan, how, it would have to, I'm assuming, conform with the same restrictions that the SDD would be approved for here. And so, you know, one of the things that we really tried to do in the updating of that master plan concept and really taking to heart the last commission's feedback, was design a plan that really was sort of the bare minimum that would achieve the goals that the Sister has for the project to ensure that, you know, we're, we're not putting undue impact on that property so that, you know, if it were sort of another developer coming in, you've already set the parameters, you've already set those regulations. So for example, the density regulations, the parking regulations, and ensuring that it's residential that would go there. And Commissioner DeGray, you also had the question about the King Street Design District and so I, it was unclear to me, and again, maybe Carl can look at this, how it overlaps with that particular parcel, but in looking at the design regulations, there wasn't anything in there that, that was concerning to Felician Sisters or us as the developer. A lot of the guidelines around, you know, sort of maintaining spaces and structures visible to the public from the roadways that add visual amenities, building setbacks, preserving the landscapes, the vistas, all of that is stuff that we believe we've already tried to build into the master plan, so we'd be happy to accommodate the King Street District if that applies to this project as well. Another question is the relationship between the Felician Sisters and the management company. So, the, the best way we sort of see to think about this is, the Felicians are already sort of doing this work on the campus already, so they have leases with the Enfield Montessori School, which is an education facility. They have a lease with St. Francis Residence, which is a residential property, and so it would be similar with these residential properties. So right now, you know, as Carl pointed out, the Sisters have essentially, as they've declined in numbers, have been subsidizing the upkeep of that property and want to put those buildings to use towards another ministry, which allows them to be able to sustain the ownership and the maintenance of the site. And so, the way it would work is similar to how it's working with the Montessori School, how it's working with St. Francis Residence. The Felician Sisters continue to own the property, they continue to have oversight of the property, and we become a lesser to the Sisters, or lessy. We rent, you know, we have this ground lease with the Sisters. They're our landlord on that property. TCB does own the buildings that we would develop, but, and we're responsible for maintaining the upkeep and the ownership of that, but again, we are, you know, in a lease with the Sisters and they have oversight over the overall property and what happens there.
So, if I may, if, if I may indulge, because I think this is a good time for me to ask the, yeah, ask the question I want to ask. So how, under that arrangement, does that new property become taxable? Not that that really has anything to do whether we grant this or not, but-
Yes, no.
Just to clear that up because, again, the Sisters are a non-taxable organization and you're just having, at least they're owning the property-
Yes.
Are you owning the buildings?
So that's a great question. So us owning the buildings, it, we, the buildings get put into a real estate entity that's essentially owned and controlled by the community builders, which is a nonprofit, this is our mission. But the buildings themselves, the, the real estate entity is a taxable entity. And so because that's a taxable entity, it's subject to the assessor evaluation and the-
How about the existing, the same thing with the existing buildings or that only applies to the new buildings?
It would only apply to the buildings that we would develop, which would be the St. Felix Center, which is currently vacant-
Right.
The convent, which, you know, currently houses the Sisters and would also be converted to housing and to any new construction.
Okay, so it does, okay.
Essentially, everything is in that cell.
That is, okay.
Yeah.
So that's how that works, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think that clears up a few things. Thank you very much.
Yes, no problem. I, I think Carl touched on the question of, you know, with the zone change, does the property remain in the historic district? So our understanding was the historic district overlay still exists no matter what with the zone change, but as Carl had, had pointed out, one of the suggestions that we had, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Higley, maybe that's not the case, but that was our interpretation and so that's why we proposed maybe moving the zone line back to just provide that, you know, that reassurance that then there's really no change to the historic district overlay because it's still the HR 33.
It's not an overlay district.
Right.
The historic district is not an overlay district.
Okay.
That's what I was shaking my head at.
Okay. So, yeah, so our, so hopefully that, you know, and that's something for more feedback if, if that proposal doesn't address that concern. That's one of the things that we're trying to do with moving the zone line, is ensure that that historic area, the historic district, that remains the same, goes unchanged, there's no plans to do anything in that historic district or disturb any of the existing historic district. The next question that we had was, I believe it was Commissioner Holinsky, you had the question about our other TCB properties. So I just wanted to, to show a few photos because I think it's helpful for context. So, TCB's developed over 33,000 apartments in the course of our organization's history. We've been around since 1964, so as Carl mentioned, you know, we're, we're a large nonprofit. We've been doing this work for a long time and intend to be here for quite a while. And so I wanted to show you some of the other properties that are in more suburban communities because I think if you go to our website, you're naturally going to see pictures of projects that are maybe in Boston or Chicago or some of the larger cities, but we do a lot of regional work. So for example, we have an office that's in North Hampton, Massachusetts. I live in Connecticut. We have properties all over Connecticut, so, you know, we're familiar with designing buildings that meet the, the community's character and the scale of the community. So just a few photos to walk you through, we don't have to spend a lot of time on this, but this right here in the image is a picture of our North Hampton property. This one's a new one, it's built on a large campus that was formerly the, the state hospital and is a passive house building, so highly efficient, green design. This is a property in Greenfield, Massachusetts. This one is, has actually been around for over, I want to say, over a decade. I'm sure my colleague could answer that question more so, but again, Greenfield, Massachusetts, you might be familiar with it, it's much more of a rural community. Sandwich, Massachusetts, this is another development that's down near the Cape. So again, much more suburban, rural, very historic, very tourist community. Holliston, Mass., this is an example of redevelopment that we did of an existing building that was repurposed. Franklin, Massachusetts, also a very, sort of more wealthy community in Massachusetts. This is an example of a residence that we did there. Stowe, Massachusetts, again, just giving you an idea of the different types of scale that we do. And that's it. So, I mean, just to give you sense, and we chose a lot of the properties that are sort of within the Massachusetts region because I think it's sort of similar to the Connecticut region and sort of where we're placed in Enfield and similar-sized towns and similar-sized So I think those were most of the commission's questions, but then there were a few resident comments that I, I won't speak directly to every single resident question, but we tried to, to capture some of the responses here. So I think there were, you know, concerns again around the ownership and the changes of ownerships and what happens in that case. And so, you know, one of the things that we just want to reiterate is that the goal of this plan is so there will not be a change in ownership and so that the Sisters can continue to own the property and provide ministry to the community as they've done for the last 90 years. So, the request for the zone change and proposed plan is intentionally trying to foster the reuse and the preservation. So one thing that, that I know the Sisters have talked a lot about and Bridgette can maybe speak more to this, is just the fact that this is really sort of a forward-thinking plan. You know, the Sisters are not in a place where they have to turn around and sell the property tomorrow and are, you know, completely destitute and need to do that, but they're recognizing that, that it's, it's getting much harder to sustain and maintain that property and because it's their home, they want to continue to do that. So I just sort of reiterating the whole intention of coming to the commission with this zone change is exactly to preserve that property the way it is and to allow the Sisters to continue to own and manage it. The traffic concerns, I think, hopefully those are addressed in the memo that was provided as well. The impact on infrastructure, there was concerns around just what the impact is going to be on infrastructure and we just wanted to reiterate that we've had some preliminary conversations with Water Pollution Control and have talked to them about what their capacity is and have taken those conversations as far as we can before we actually start digging into the design work and the site plan work. So I, I think Commissioner Fiore, you brought this up last time, you're really sort of the next step, and I think Commissioner Alamo, you had a lot of questions about this too. How do we make sure at the previous, yeah, you know, how do we make sure that we're building something that is sustainable for the community and is not going to put an undue burden on the taxpayers of Enfield? The other piece I'll just mention about infrastructure and things like water, sewer, traffic, any sort of upgrades that would need to happen to infrastructure that are caused by the development in order to meet the standards of the town, those would become development costs, those would become the sort of burden of the development, not the burden of taxpayers in Enfield to be able to pay for.
If I could-
Sure.
... respond on that comment. So, in addition to the, the real estate taxes that'll be generated from this project, we will be connecting to the sewer system. I'm sure there will be sewer connection fees, which I, I don't know how much they are, but they're probably, you know, fairly significant based upon per unit. And there will be obviously sewer user charges. And I sort of look at sewer facilities as sort of, you know, they have a certain capacity and they like to get as full as they can because the more, you know, it's like an empty hotel, you don't make money off an empty hotel, right? So you want users and some towns can't get their users, so they go out and rent their space to other towns. So, those are another benefit to the, at least, you know, that component of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Thank you for being delicate with that conversation about WPA.
I also wanted to clarify for the record, there were a couple of comments from residents that I, it was not our intention to misrepresent that the documents that we submitted with the last planning commission indicated any sort of letters of support. We submitted a sign-in sheet from the different community outreach processes and on those sign-in sheets, it just says "sign-in sheet," it doesn't say, you know, letter of support. And I just want to clarify for the record that that's all it was, it's not meant to misrepresent anybody who, who, you know, wants to give testimony for or against the project. The question of safety of the children came up as, you know, we had talked about the, the site uses and really sort of focusing on sort of three bands and areas of uses in the, in the site. And one thing we just wanted to clarify is that the, the front area of the Orin Thompson House where we had shown sort of, you know, children would be able to use as part of their school services, there are, that is currently an area that the Enfield Montessori School is using and where they do have children using that space for play area and recess and those sorts of things. So one thing that I don't know if we got into the details and the concept that we've worked with the headmaster of the school to do is take what they're already doing and add some additional landscape barrier in that area. So again, that's the historic district, there's no intention to put any sort of structure or, you know, any sort of necessarily like fencing or anything like that in there, however, and working closely with the headmaster have said, "How do we take what they're already doing and maybe use this as an opportunity to plant more trees, plant more landscaping?" Which, you know, we could also discuss that with the Historic District Commission, but our thought was that would be enhancing the existing area. And then a question just about property management, how issues are handled. So I thought I should just spend a few minutes talking about the community builders' property management process. So again, just like we've been developing housing for over 50 years, same with our property management services, we do both. And so we currently manage 9,800 units of housing across 11 different states. And I, I bring up that number because I think that it's important to realize that if we were not doing this well, it would be difficult for us to, you know, keep getting the opportunity to do new developments and continue to manage new properties. So, we have very good relationships in the communities that we work in and with the different state funders and federal funders and the different regulators that are making sure that we're having good property management. Our staffing model is such, especially with this project, is to have onsite property management services. So what that means is that we have a property manager, sometimes an assistant property manager that are, and also maintenance staff that are on the site every single day. And in off-hours, there's on-call maintenance hours. And so that does a couple of things. One is it makes sure that they're eyes on the property that we manage at all times. So, you know, if there's trash lying around or if the grass hasn't been mowed and, or the snow removal contractor didn't come, we're seeing that on a regular basis. There's oversight, there's management, there's not us waiting to get a phone call from a neighbor to find out that something's not working right. So that's one really key piece. Part of that staffing model is we also have what's called our Community Life Program, which essentially is like resident services and what that means is it's staff that works particularly with residents who live on the property to foster community building. So what that looks like, especially like in our senior properties, is we have staff under our property management arm that are providing, you know, programs that, that help seniors fight isolation. So they might be having, you know, different, you know, groups that come together, like a knitting group or a workout group. They also help them with getting access to healthcare and helping with their finances. For some of our family properties, those same staff will focus on things like, "How do we make sure that every kid is enrolled in daycare? How do we make sure that families are feeling, you know, that have, they have housing stability so they're not falling behind on their rent or they're, you know, being a good steward of the community?" So there's sort of just an added layer of, you know, not only sort of the transactional and making sure people are following the lease rules and making sure that the maintenance is up- is upkeep, but also the sort of whole, sort of whole community approach to what we do. As far as our maintenance, so as I mentioned, there's maintenance staff on the site. The maintenance staff is responsible for making sure that if there's work orders, if there's things that are wrong, especially if there's emergency work orders, those need to happen right away. So because we have maintenance staff that's onsite, you know, they understand the property, they understand what the needs are, they're planning ahead, they're involved in the capital needs assessments that take place, you know, they really have a deep understanding of what it takes to upkeep that property. And just generally speaking, what that maintenance looks like, as I mentioned, I mean, it's making sure the grass is mowed, it's making sure the roofs don't leak, it's making sure the sidewalks are plowed. So really sort of the full suite of services, really what the Felician's are currently doing with only, you know, 24 sisters there, we have sort of a whole team that can really take that over. I think Julie said it best to us when she was saying, promoting the lawn, we start, you know, on Monday, mow it through Friday, and then we start back over on Monday and mow it through Friday. So those are the types of responsibilities that fall to our maintenance staff. And then I want to talk about just resident selection and lease enforcement, because this is also a really important piece of managing large apartment communities. So for anybody to live in a TCB property, you have to apply and you have to be compatible with the property to live there. So it means you have to meet the income eligibility, and it works multiple ways. One is because we're not designing luxury housing, if you can afford a luxury apartment, you're probably making too much money. But it also works the other way. If you're not making enough money that you are going to be somebody who can have a stable rent and a stable, you know, sort of meets your monthly obligations, that's, you know, that's not doing any favors to renting out to people who can't afford to actually be there, which helps us afford to operate and maintain the properties. You also have to go through a background check. You have to make sure that you've gone through sort of, you know, a reference check. So there's different sort of compatibility checks that we do there to make sure that we understand the background. One thing that I also just want to mention in all sort of TCB properties, there are rules, especially in federal properties, that you can't have registered sex offenders that are living there. And so, you know, again, there's very specific rules that we have to follow. And the lease enforcement is a big piece of this. It's our goal to make sure that everybody who's living in our properties is having a safe and healthy experience living in those properties. We want the same thing that the sisters want, you know, they, you know, one of the nice things that's been good about partnering with the Felician Sisters is they've said, you know, who do we want as our neighbors? What kind of community do we want to foster? And it very much aligns with the goals and the types of developments that we do in which we want everybody to be in a successful place that feels safe and feels like their home. So again, sort of with lease enforcement, I bring that up because that's a part of it, right? Like you have to be a good neighbor in order to stay in this property. And so I think, I think that sort of covers the majority of sort of how we operate, but I'm happy to answer more questions about that. And then another community member had a really good comment that I just wanted to address, just concerns around competing with your other housing providers in the area, like the Enfield Housing Authority. I just want to say, you know, yes, these, the funds for these types of projects are competitive, but the way that the funding works that we seek out, it's competitive across the entire state or the entire country. So it's not necessarily competitive on a geographic reason, sorry, geographic level. It's competitive against everybody who's applying. So that means that it's not necessarily Enfield Housing Authority or us that can get funded. It's very possible and happens all the time that multiple projects get funded in one community. It's really based on the merits of the project and how it meets the different policy goals. I'll also just add that we've had conversations with the Housing Authority, you know, and they, they have projects going on that, you know, they don't want it to compete with our projects, we don't want to compete with their projects. So we've been trying to sort of just make sure we're communicating, make sure we're, you know, passing along information. I think one thing I just want to reiterate is that the world of housing developers, especially nonprofit housing developers, is a very close-knit world, and we work really closely with different partners on this work. And then I'm just going to turn it over to Bridgette to sort of answer a few more questions.
Hello.
Hello.
Yep, there you go.
Good evening. So we've gone through a lot of different questions, and I know that you probably have more, but just want to reiterate a couple of things that, again, the sisters have been very intentional about their planning and because they know at some point the campus will not be sustainable, nor will their ministries be sustainable without some type of redevelopment. And so when we came before the commission early on, we were guided towards this path at the time of the Special Development District. And that's, and what we're finding, and what Carl tried to explain, is that remaining in the HR 33 district does not allow the sisters to preserve the property and have some type of sustainability on the property as well. So, you know, by reducing the area of the zone change and leaving the historic district in the HR 33, and it's our goal also that we would restrict the use to residential use only, because those are the same goals of the sisters. You know, Carl also mentioned that, you know, there are things, people have differences of opinions here, and they're entitled to that, but I think there's two things that everyone agrees, and that is their admiration of the sisters and how much they love the beautiful campus. And no one wants to see the existing buildings changed, so we really are trying to find a path to preserve those buildings. The sisters do not want to be forced to sell the property. It is not their intention to sell the property. But based in this current HR 33 zone, it could be developed by a developer into single-family homes, and the iconic campus and those buildings would be a memory, and they don't want that. And so they are really asking for your help and your support and helping to identify whatever the path is, and what we have been pursuing is the SDD to help preserve the campus and their buildings. Again, their intention, and we've been partnering with the Community Builders, is to enter into a long-term relationship, a long-term ground lease, because the sisters want to be around for another 90 years, continuing to build community in the town of Enfield. So we ask for your support and open it up for more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready for our questions, Don?
Absolutely, yes, Mr. Chairman.
As I said before, probably have more after tonight too, so let's keep this going. So I'm going to look around, who would like to start with their question? Commissioner Holinsky.
Yeah, just, I was looking at the numbers tonight, and I got a little confused, so I just wanted to clarify that, to start out with. The two new buildings are going to house 200...
Yep.
The two new buildings, are they going to house, they're going to house 250 apartments?
No, the 250 apartments will be spread through, they include the existing 22 units, and they will be in the convent, and in addition to the convent, which will eventually come, and in St. Felix, and in addition to St. Felix.
Yeah.
Well, in your narrative, it says 120 units in the convent and the Felix Center, and then another 250 in the new buildings?
No, 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 no.
Or at least that was implied in what I read.
Sorry, that wasn't the intention of the narrative, so...
So what are the total number of apartments that are...
Yep, so the total number of apartments that we're proposing to be built, so the total density of this, and this is before we move the zone, but this is showing 250 apartments. That's including the existing 22 units that are part of the St. Francis residence. So with the zone, the sort of modified zone that we're proposing, we'd be proposing 230 apartments between the convent, oh, sorry, the convent, the St. Felix Center, which the St. Felix Center is an existing building we're proposing in addition to that, and the construction of two new buildings.
So the 230 would be the total increase of apartment availability?
So that would be the total number of apartments excluding the existing St. Francis residence on there already. And what we were trying to convey is that within the convent, in our narrative, we had estimated it was 120 units when we went and did the floor area ratio. It's 145 that are actually there, plus another 22 in the St. Felix, so, but they're not being occupied right now.
30 includes the sisters already living there?
That includes that space, yeah.
Space, yeah.
So you're increasing by about 200, a little over 200.
So if you were to, if you were to factor in the existing dwelling units between St. Felix and the convent, that would be 167 units, so 230 less that, 167 would be sort of what we're, what's being added in total. I know, I'm sorry, this is not helping with the math.
How many more people will be living there?
So right now, there's, there's...
That's what I'm asking, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, so right now, there's 22 apartments, there would be 230 new apartments total.
So approximately another couple hundred people, you know, and maybe some more because of two-bedroom apartments or something like that.
Right.
So it might be in the 250 range or somewhere, somewhere around.
Yeah.
Just trying to get a ballpark.
Exactly, so that would be the appropriate range. It's over 50%, I think, 75% of it, I can look at the narrative, is one bedrooms, so you're not looking at multiple people in that.
Yeah, I understand, because, you know, it also relates to the traffic issues, okay? So we'll have 250 more cars.
Over a 10-year development period. They're not going to, this is not a product that's going to be built.
True, but by the end, you know...
10 years from now.
After 10 years, you're going to have this extra traffic.
Yeah, and that's what the traffic study and the subsequent report factors all that into consideration.
Yeah, that was, that was my next question. My question was, maybe we ought to have a little more discussion about the traffic because, you know, if you're going to add, bump it up by 200-plus people and grant it over 10 years, I mean, it doesn't make sense that there's not a lot of impact on the traffic. Seems to me you're putting a couple hundred extra cars into that area, and those aren't big roads. I mean, South Road's not a big road, you know.
Yeah, I think next time, when you can read the report that he has, but he'll be here next time to...
Haven't had a chance to...
Yeah, absolutely, sure, of course, yes.
But there's a concern about traffic.
Right, yep.
And, you know, with the high school, Enfield Street School, we had comments last week that where some of the residents said, I can't get out of my house when there's a school event, which is basically nothing we can do about. But if you're adding another few hundred cars into that in the morning and the afternoon and...
And one of the things the traffic report did is it looked at those peak hours of school, peak hours, and, yeah.
I just, I don't know, I might, I'm thinking it might be understated, I don't know. I'd like to explore that a little bit.
Yeah, he'll be available next time.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Also, you talked about the character.
Yes.
I don't know how you define that, and I understand there's confusion with that.
Yeah.
But we are putting up two big buildings, okay? And they're not there now.
Correct.
And so, and most of the residents around the area are single-family housing. So it is, it is changing, in my opinion, it would be changing the character to a certain extent.
So one thing I just wanted to reiterate is that the proposed new buildings are all being placed behind the existing buildings.
Yeah, I understand that.
At a height equal or less than to what buildings are there. And so I do have a couple pictures of the street view that I'm just going to share with you real quick from Enfield Street, just to help orient it. So, let me just see here.
This is existing, right?
This is existing. So this is Enfield Street along this way, looking towards the Felician campus right here. So this, just to orient you, is the Enfield Congregational Church. So the, it's sort of hard to see, but the Orin Thompson House is back here sort of tucked in. And so I think what we've done in terms of our studies and looking at the property and trying to think about the placement of any new construction, is really trying to understand this view to make sure that we're preserving that view. I mean, it's just based on feedback that we heard from the community, is this is a really important, the character is important, like, you know, whatever the word means, like maintaining what this looks like, maintaining that feel that when you're walking down Enfield Street, you're not seeing change to this property. And so I sort of show this because I think what we've seen in our studies, when you look at this, is you really get a sense of how far set back that those buildings really are. I think it's, 550 feet is the back of the St. Francis residence, so everything would be further behind there. Also with the trees, it, you know, we were sort of looking at that and saying, okay, what does this look like in the, you know, in the summer and the fall? And so again, really trying to take consideration of that developable area is tucked back in there, so that, really minimizing any sort of change to what you're seeing here.
Winter time.
Winter time, yeah, also. Yeah, sorry, I said fall, winter, spring, yeah.
Because it's much different in the summertime when trees are full of leaves.
Sure, yeah.
It's in the wintertime when the leaves are gone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But again, those buildings, the new buildings will not be any higher than what's there, so...
Right, yep, good point.
You know, and look, that's one of your charges, we understand that, so...
You second?
Yes, I'm good.
Commissioner Alamo, Commissioner Maggiore? Go ahead, Commissioner Maggiore, go ahead.
I had a simple question. Would the sisters be still occupying part of the property as they go along in the next few years? That's one. Second would be, you know, had good population of the students from Montessori School over many years, and they're now in this complex. Will there be any additional benefit to the school and the children, the staff, once the development gets underway? So those are the two at this point. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try and answer your question. So the first question, will the sisters remain on the campus? Yes, they will remain on the campus, and they also will be offered, and I know they've already said they're interested, in staying on the campus and moving into the apartments, at which point the convent does get redeveloped. So we don't know yet at what, you know, assuming we get a zoning change, we don't know yet at what phase the convent would be redeveloped, but no sister will be displaced, and yes, they will continue to live on the campus. That is one of the goals of the project.
At this point, sisters don't have a plan to actually leave the premises?
Yeah.
No, they do not want to leave. That's their home, and they want to stay.
Okay.
So they're trying to determine a plan that allows them to stay. So benefits to the school, well, first of all, the overall concept of a multi-generational campus provides benefits to not only the seniors, but the children, and there's research and studies done that show that. Also, there will be some additions to the school in terms of an added entrance that will be an outcome, and also additional parking and easier access into the school as a result of the project.
I just want to add again, the headmaster of the school has been involved in being on the advisory group that helps advise us, so she's seen and sort of put all the input into that, so just wanted to add that.
Well, if I may take this opportunity, and I received it, Lori, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but I thought our SDD regulations specifically state that all the buildings must be converted before the new buildings can be built. So if I took your comment correctly, I might not have, sounded like the sisters were going to leave the current convent when the new building was built, so then you're going to convert the convent.
We intend that the first phase would be what is currently a completely vacant building, and that would be senior living, the St. Felix Center, and then if we then continue on with the convent, assuming that's the second phase, so maybe that's where I didn't speak very clearly.
Okay, okay.
Does that clarify it?
That, thank you very much. There's a difference between, in my mind anyways, old and new. We have to just, so that's why, I just wanted to get that clarified. Commissioner D'Antonio?
So I have a few things. I want to tail off Commissioner Holinsky's point about character, and I know you had mentioned about the obscure... character, and I know you had mentioned about the obscurity of character, which is, is a great point. I know one of the things we talk about with character is architecture. So I'm looking for your thoughts there in terms of, you know, obviously, these, these new and renovated buildings aren't going to look like single-family homes, but they're not going to be immediately around single-family homes. So I want to know your thoughts and intentions in terms of, you know, rough, rough design and architecture in terms of fitting into the existing landscape. And then after, after that, I, I'd just like you to kind of elaborate on the relationship with the south, the, the property to the south, immediately to the south. I think in your presentation last week, you had kind of alluded to possibly removing a connection to the property. And, and I'm just looking for more in terms of, you know, what's that relationship between the two properties? They're connected today, but you don't foresee the connection. Appreciate whatever clarity. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. So, and I might turn it over to you, Miles, in a second for the, the architecture piece. So as far as we've gotten, and we haven't dug into the designs of all the, the buildings and what they would look like, but the, the goals would be to renovate the existing buildings. So the convent and the St. Felix Center would, you know, those buildings would stay, they'd be renovated, they'd be updated, but, but you're looking at the same essential, like the building. For any new construction, one of the, the goals that's been a, that we've laid out in sort of the priorities with the sisters and the community builders is to create like a common language of architecture. So, you know, right now, you have the brick buildings, you have the Montessori school that is that more sort of brutalist building. And so trying to find a way to create some cohesion with any sort of new construction in the whole campus. And then sort of finding the balance between having something that, that fits the historic character, which when we've worked with the state Historic Preservation Office in the past, it doesn't always necessarily mean it looks exactly like the historic buildings, but complements those historic buildings. So I say that those are sort of the three, like, goals that we've set out with the design, but haven't actually started to, to dig into the design yet. And I don't know, Miles, if you wanted to add anything to that?
I'm Miles Brown, I'm in the MRC. I think you, yeah, okay. I think you spoke very clear. I don't really have anything to add. I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words, and I'm not going to try to stand up here and describe to you what the buildings are going to look like now. So, but I think what Kristen said, you know, fitting in with, with the campus and the scale, and, you know, is a, is a perfect way to describe it. I don't, I don't have anything else to add.
And I think our intention would be, you know, if we, if we know this project can move forward with the zone change, that next step is that site plan and digging into some of the detail and doing some more community and public engagement around really getting into that detail. And then I wanted to speak to the second question, which is the connection with South Road. And actually, Miles, sorry, do you mind bringing that up?
To clarify, I meant the property to the south.
The Little Sisters property.
Yes, sorry, I misspoke.
The connection between, yeah.
The property to the south is owned by the Little Sisters of the Poor. And Bridget, maybe you can point out exactly where it is. And the Little Sisters of the Poor currently have an assisted living complex that's on the property. And if you can see sort of based on the existing base map here, there's a number of roads that connect between the Little Sisters of the Poor property to the Felician Campus. And one of the things in talking with the Little Sisters of the Poor and talking with the residents that currently live on the Felician Campus is there's a lot of issues with people cutting through from South, or, sorry, from Post Office Road or from Enfield Road, cutting through the campuses to the, to the other side. And so one of the goals of this plan, and we've had some preliminary conversations with the ART about it as well, is sort of making sure that any connections between that southern property and the Felician Campus are only for emergency access because we want to prevent people from cutting through, mostly to help mitigate, mitigate traffic for the, the seniors and for the students that are already there. And so really do some more traffic calming with that, that sort of new approach. So it would cut off a, a cut through, through the campus, but we feel that that's better for the safety of the people who are already using the space and would be using the space in the future.
And as Kristen mentioned, we met with the Little Sisters of the Poor who own the property that St. Joseph's Nursing Home occupies, and that was their request. That's been their challenge, is this cut through, because trucks cut through their property and then cut across the property. So we engaged with them, and they see this as a benefit.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate that. Yeah, I feel like it was a, a quick mention at the presentation, and I think the context is really helpful for understanding. And I know the, the traffic study just looks at traffic on, so you, you guys took that into account in the study and all, so I appreciate it. Thanks for the clarification.
It was discussed at the ART meeting, and we had discussions with the representative, I think that's Enfield Fire District, right, Frank? So their, their fire marshal was there. And, you know, I don't, they don't want to see it go away, like to be a hard, hard stop there, but that there be, you know, reduce the emergency, you know, with some kind of tearaway gate or something, you know, whatever they, they like is what we'll, we'll do.
And one other thing I just want to add. So the Little Sisters of the Poor and the Felician Sisters both want to see walking paths, so they were put as part of the whole master plan. So you can still walk the campus, but you can't drive across the campus.
One sec, Chris. Commissioner Laimo?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for answering some of my questions I had from the previous meeting. On this meeting and Carl's opening, he covered some of the things that I had previously. Some of this may, that I have to say, may be in the to-determine conversations that are going on with staff and Carl and the town attorney, so forgive me if I go there. For me, I, in my opinion, I think the SDD zone is difficult for us and the applicant being, sitting on this for, I think, the last two, and Lori, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was the Old Hazerville Memorial School, where we did the office, right, and, and the nursing home. We used this zone for both of those. So in those discussions, maybe because of where it is, we wanted to be sure it was going to be a mixed use. And in your presentation last, two weeks ago, you talked about, and I kind of understood it as maybe some kind of healthcare building, unit, facility, or some kind of mixed component in there. You want me to stop? I'll stop now if you want to?
I can, yeah. So I, I think what we're referring to is the Wellness Center, which is, is, it's more of like a residential program space. So it's for the residents of the property. The idea would be to, to, the Felician Sisters have a number of partnerships that they had developed with, you know, physical therapists, podiatrists, different sort of health groups that were coming on to the campus and working with the St. Francis residents, or back when they had the, the daycare center. And so the idea would be to, to continue to sort of bring them on, on a program basis, like maybe some classes or some one-on-one sessions. So it, the idea is it's a residential space, the same, like if we were to have a community room, and we would host like a, a workshop in, in that room. So not a commercial use necessarily in the sense of, of being like a medical, it wouldn't be a medical facility.
Right. You're not partnering, and I know currently there's other, there's medical people who come there. I know that for sure, currently.
Yeah, but no.
So you're not partnering with other stakeholders in Enfield, St. Francis, Johnson, Hartford Hospital, or any of those other healthcare providers we have in the community to have a fixed location there.
Correct.
You're not doing that.
Not, that wasn't the intention with the plan.
Going back to the last two approvals we did on this, and maybe because they were in different zones, we asked for a mixed use, and both did. Blair Manor, for example, is going to have a gym. They're partnering or leasing to another, or an outside organization to meet that requirement.
Okay.
Because this, you know, like I said, for me, the SDD is, you know, difficult. You know, we're asking for a zone change. This isn't a site plan review. I mean, we can do the zone change, and the whole, the site plan could be 100% different, because this is a zone change. You know, you just mentioned, you know, the ART meetings. Carl just mentioned it again. You know, I looked, staff reports, ART, NA, 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 and I rely on the ARTs stuff. You guys met with them, and I'm not saying you didn't, but they didn't comment on anything because, and I'm thinking, it's not a site plan.
Right, yeah.
It's a zone change.
Right.
So it's difficult to put all, you know, all this together to make it work.
I, I understand your concerns, and, so let me say this. It's difficult to get, to get to that part until we know what density you're going to agree on, you know, because it's a fact of life. I mean, it costs a lot of money to, to do that part of it. And when I looked at the, now, I think what happened in Blair Manor, and I wasn't there the first round, they may have come in with a site plan and a zone change, and there were concerns, I'm guessing, because I was there the second night...
Did you represent them? No?
No, 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 that was, yeah, somebody, the guy from Glass River, Peter Alter. And they gave them the zone change and said, "Go back and work on your site plan." And then they came back and just did the site plan separately. So, but, but I understand your concerns. One of the things I, I would say is that I've had this discussion with staff and with the town attorney, you know, you're not allowed to do a zone change with conditions. It's either up or down.
Right.
But the applicant...
Difficulty?
Yeah. With, with the applicant, I think, and this is the, I posited them, and I didn't get a negative response to this, we can submit ourselves to conditions. The first one, the most important one, would be that the density we were looking for would be residential density, so that we couldn't come back with any other type of use, that you'd say the density is 10 an acre for residential units. So that's all we could build back there. So that'd be one thing of assuring that we're going to do at least that part of what, what we say we're going to do. And perhaps if staff, you know, if there are other concerns raised during these conversations, we come up with other things like that.
So you can offer conditions, but we can't?
Yes, I believe we can, yes. And the most important one would be to say, you're not going to just give us nine units an acre, you're going to give us nine units residential per acre. So that'll get us started down that path, I think. Yeah.
It's helpful, because, you know, like I was saying, it's difficult to, to get your arms around this because of the two, you know, you're putting the cart before the horse or the horse before, I mean, this is difficult.
Yes.
This is, oh, very difficult. And I'm glad that we're going to look at it when it comes time to change our regulations.
And I'm guessing, and I'm not 100% sure, but I think, you know, this was done back in the 70s with the big old comments, I think this was used there.
In the 80s.
80s, yeah, okay, yeah, that's right, 86. And the other properties, they were just shells essentially. So it was sort of easy to do that. We're proposing new buildings and all that goes along with that. So, but, but I understand that concern, you know...
And, and, you know, and you'll remember from the, you know, the first time you guys were in, I, you know, a lot of my questions were formulated around some of the things that would be come out of the art meetings.
Right, yeah, absolutely. I do recall that. And now you're looking at something where they say...
And they say, "We got no comment. You guys are saying we met."
John, yeah, yeah. John Kabebo is not going to say, "Okay, the drainage looks good," because he's, he's got nothing to look at.
Exactly.
I get it.
Yeah, it's, that's the difficulty on my part. I'm speaking for, maybe others as well. I'm speaking for me.
You know, I, I wish, you know, I think, look, you know me, Frank, I, you know, I've known these people for a while, you know, they're clients, obviously, and, but, but I believe they're going to do what they say they're going to do. But, but, you know, you're a commissioner that has to, you know, deal with that. And if there's some way that we can meet in the middle on, on something that we can, you know, let's, you know, staff and I and the town attorney can put our heads together and say...
I've never seen anything successful that didn't come out of the middle. It's got to come from the middle to work.
Yeah, 100%. But I understand what you're saying, Frank.
Yeah, so the other, the other piece, taking the temperature of the community, being a lifelong resident here. So we're talking about multi-generational use. So I think that part of it, you know, in, in the coffee shops and everything that goes around town, got people, you know, and I'll justify a little bit, it got people a little nervous about what you're doing there. So, you know, if it was just like a, not a multi-generational, but an older generational, just older generational, I mean, does it have to be multi because of your, I don't know if you're applying for grants and it requires that, but to, you know, from, for me, from my feeling and being a lifelong resident, to me, that's more in line with the mission of the sisters. If it was just elderly, you know, generation. And I don't know where you defy the elderly part. I don't know, I'm 64, Carl, so maybe I might be able to live there now, too.
I'm the same age, Frank.
I don't know, I could be moving in.
We're young guys, as I can say.
So I, I think that kind of go, and then go back up to the healthcare facility, you partner with one of the stakeholders we have, one of the health clo, you know, a, a, a building that has workout equipment and a service for medical, and, I don't know. I'm not telling you how to do your project, but I'm just throwing that stuff out there.
Yeah, this is really helpful feedback. I, I do want to say, you know, the amenities that we have on the campus are that wellness center, the, the gym, playgrounds. But I think that, and so we're open, it's helpful to hear this feedback, because I think our intention was to keep it very much focused on sort of residential program spaces versus like a lease or something.
But it would be a community, or it would be a community atmosphere if all that was plugged into it.
Exactly, yeah.
Like I belong to Health Trax in Enfield.
Yeah.
And I just told you how old I was. There's a lot of people older than me there.
Yeah.
That go in the pool and do all the, all the activities there that they offer. I don't know.
And so I think our, our thinking was how to, you know, I, some of the feedback that we got from the public input and the, the existing residents were just not wanting to create a lot of extra sort of, you know, going back to traffic, too. Not wanting to sort of create an extra, like, retail space where there's a lot of people coming in and out.
Well, not retail, but I mean, healthcare. Healthcare for the, if it was elderly people only.
Yeah. So I think that's, I mean, that's something we can certainly, like, look at about, like, formal partnerships are really important. You know, so our organization is actually, in a lot of other communities, we partner specifically with healthcare facilities.
Right. We have Johnson, we have Johnson Memorial, or Trinity Health here in Enfield. We have Hartford Hospital here. We have the Health Trax. We have so many other stakeholders that are here already.
Yeah, and that's part of our community life programs that we do, where we create formal partnerships and, and stuff. So, so that's something we can take and sort of think about, about whether it's like a formal mixed use, is it a formal partnership that's providing services to the community? So I, I think that's a really good point.
Let's touch a little bit on the multi-generational piece of it. Does it have to be because of other resources that are putting, or is that just a thought? Is that a thought?
First and foremost, it's, it's sort of the, the vision that the sisters have based on their experience. I don't know if you want to talk to that, and then I can talk a little bit about sort of the...
If we can keep that kind of brief.
Sure.
Because we're going to be coming back in two weeks, so, because I want, you know, because we have a lot of questions here, Frank.
So, yeah, so that's my last piece of it for now, is the...
Do you want us to come back and answer it?
No, 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 please. Me, for me, that's, that's, I think fits more in the mission of the sisters, like I was saying about the older population. So if you could just, that's my last question for now.
So when the sisters were contemplating various plans, they looked at what they already had in terms of their ministries, and they had young children there and seniors, and they know the benefits of a multi-generational campus. So does it have to exclusively be multi-generational? Could it just be seniors? Yes, it could be. But their, their choice and their vision is multi-generational because they think that brings a bigger benefit to all the people that would be on the campus. So in a nutshell...
And so, see, I'm, I'm really familiar with the Felician Sisters of Enfield, so maybe this is the Felician Sisters of North America's vision. I mean, I'm familiar with them because I've worked with them a lot.
They've had children on that campus with seniors for quite a while, so...
Yeah, that's just my experience in being a resident in Enfield.
You know, Seth, Frank?
Yep, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Before I give you to you, I just want to, I want to thank you, Trinidad Delina, for mentioning about working together and trying to come up with some of these other initiatives. I personally, as the chairman, I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Yep, go ahead.
And this is for the chairman, to the staff, is if we were to divide this property, like subdivide this property, what is the overall size of the STD zone as opposed to the whole property? Because with this new map that you've given us, I mean, you're saying the property is 25 acres. And if we're going to look at this as part of the property being in HR 33, and then part of the property STD zone, it is very hard to say. I want to know what the overall... I want to know what the overall size of the SDD would be.
I don't have that answer.
And and then would it then still fall, be able to be an SDD zone? And I'm saying it very clearly because I don't want to say it the other thing.
Yes, the the SDD zone requires at least five acres.
Okay.
And it certainly would be meeting that criteria.
And my second question is if they, we do divide this, then we don't take the over occupancy of all of the buildings, just the occupancy of the new zone? Do you know where I'm going? Is, in our regulation says 80% occupancy of the buildings.
Of the vacant buildings.
Of the vac, of the
In the zone.
Of the buildings in the zone. So if we, we subdivide this piece of property into the two zones, then we only look at the vacancy of the SDD zone?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct, however
I just want to make sure.
A clarification, I don't believe that there is a subdivision being proposed. The, what they're proposing is to eliminate the area that's in the historic district zone from the SDD rezone.
That's, that's why I'm trying to get it.
So when you say subdivision, that that means you're actually like creating lots?
I'm using the wrong terminology because I'm looking at this map and that's kind of what it says it's going to do, that's
I think your interpretation is correct, just some terminology was a little questionable.
Terminology is wrong. I just don't want to say the wrong thing on that other
Yeah, that other thing, yes.
Other thing. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, can I, so these are pretty good numbers for the map. You're seeing that the entire area is 26.82 acres. The HR 33, which will remain in the front, will comprise 10.3 acres. And the SDD will comprise 16.52 acres. So that's sort of the breakout.
Thank you.
For a total area of, and while we're discussing this, just to bring it up, and I don't know, I discussed this again with staff and with the town attorney, this will be your decision. The overall concept is to build, to, at the end of this project, that 250 or 230 new renovated, new building units. If, when we came back before and we said, look, it's 9.3 units an acre, that included 26. The vision hasn't changed, the numbers haven't changed, but if now we do the calculation based upon only 16 acres, obviously that number is gonna change. But the vision hasn't changed, it's, we're not, you know, it's just gonna be, you know, the same amount of units on a smaller zone change area. You want, I know you understood that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And someone gave me their phone for free.
There you go. Are you all set? That's it?
That's it.
Commissioner Higley, questions?
I just have one question at the moment, well, two, but one. The other one I'll save for the traffic guide when it comes to next meeting. If you're, it's my understanding you have five existing buildings that you're gonna refurbish. Is that correct?
Point them out.
Two? What happened to the other three?
So not refurbished, preserve.
The ones that are existing that you're gonna redo?
Yep.
There are two?
Just the convent?
All your paperwork said five.
So the paperwork talked about preserving five of the existing buildings. So that's the convent, EMS, St. Francis and St. Felix.
Correct.
St. Francis, sorry, Orin Thompson House and St. Francis, they're connected. The Montessori School, those will stay the same. These are the ones that are vacant and under occupied, and so this is what we would be redeveloping are these two buildings.
So now you're down to two buildings?
The others weren't gonna change either.
The other ones, but
You're right.
They're preserved, yeah.
Take place adjacent to those.
My question is, how many apartments will you get out of those two buildings?
So again, we have, we need to do more detailed site plan work, the
Approximately.
Yeah, the approximate would be 50 through the St. Felix and 70 through the convent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're asking if we were not to build the two new buildings, how many, right?
Correct.
That's the number.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Yep, 120.
One of the things that the commission had asked us last time before we came back was to to look at sort of what's the bottom line of what's needed to maintain the campus and and sort of preserve that. And so that's how we backed into this total unit count.
Thank you. Commissioner Lefakis, you have, were you, have you a question? Believe it or not, I only have three, which is, everybody, yeah, everybody's looking, wow. Make sure you answered pretty much all of it for tonight.
Yeah.
For tonight, all of my questions. So one of the things that concerns me a little bit, just because I wanted to get it on the record, is the 10-year plan. Because to me, that automatically tells me you're gonna have to be coming back if we granted this and in the site plan, blah, blah, blah. Another five-year extension because things are for five years. And it's kind of concerning that you're spreading out this project over 10 years. A lot, I've seen a lot of things changing in Enfield in my lifetime, I've been here a long time. So a lot of things can change in 10 years. So I am, I just, I understand why you're doing it. I'm just, I just was surprised that at least as of now, your proposal is a 10-year project. I would think it would have been a lot less than that. And I'm just a little concerned about it, just wanted to mention it. The other thing that bothered me a little bit was when, when your presentations, and I know this is raw data and this raw material, when you said how many children are going to be possibly at this, you know, project when it's done. And believe me, there's a big difference between 16 and 53. So I mean, to me, that's like, okay, I almost can't trust that number because the differential is just way too great. So if you could just, not for tonight, just take a look at that and maybe rethink, you know, hone that down a little bit, be more, that's, that's just too big a range. And that's like, I have no idea how many children you're gonna have there. Not that that really should matter in this application, in this change, but it is nice background information to have. Then another question I had, and I know it's a, I'm gonna use this term, it's a master plan, because I'm not gonna call it a site plan. In my mind, it's a master plan, which we've kind of already talked about in the beginning of this meeting. It looks to me like you're proposing three new curb cuts on South Road? Or is it just two? And I had a question about the house that's there right by 91. Is that gonna come down or is that house going to remain on South Road, that's a sister's own?
Yeah, so I can, we can tackle that question really quickly if you'd like. So I'll let Miles talk about the existing curb cuts that are there and what's proposed. The house that's up on that corner, that would, in, one of the things that we're proposing in order to sort of create that space and that curb cut would be to take that, that residential building down.
That's what I assumed, at least as of today.
That's as of, as of the concept that that we're proposing.
Yep.
So it's really just the one new curb cut at the the east end of the site.
Okay, the house basically is now.
Right. This one would, or get relocated a little bit, but this one already exists down there.
Okay, so it's really this one new curb cutting, you know, widening or enhancement of another one?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Can I address the two questions that you
Yeah, please.
Two? So so if you give us the zone change, obviously that stays, there's no time limit on that.
Yeah.
If we come in with, let's say, a phase one site plan, we would have the five years or whatever, I mean, that's changed up and down the last three years under governor's orders and then they passed a new public act. So, but that would be for that discrete part of the, so that site plan for, let's say, the first one would be the St. Felix House. Right? I always get confused. Yes, so that would be that. And so we had five years to finish that development.
Right, right.
So there'd be nothing else approved.
Yeah.
So if it takes us more than five years to finish that, you know, there's issues there. And then we'd move on to the next phase and we'd have, starting again, a new phase, so I don't think, even though it's a 10-year plan, I don't see us necessarily having to come back for extensions. We will come back for each phase and say, you know, and you take a look at it.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay, now just, you know, 10 years just seemed to me like, why would I want to run a project out that long, to be quite frank with you? I don't think I would want to.
Well, if you were for profit developer, you couldn't do that.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah. And the children will, will hone more.
Yeah, please.
So we even mentioned this last time, I know the public wants to speak in there, you know, so, but there are studies, you know, but studies are studies, right? So if you want real world data, I'll ask them to look at what their other projects are like.
Sure.
What do we see there?
Sure.
And then and present that to you. Like, oh, some guys say, you know, you come here and they ask for, well, let me show you what our parking really needs are as opposed to, you know, in the real world.
Right.
Yeah, and the kids, I don't, what do they say now, IRL or something?
Yeah, but that'd be, that'd be great if you just could. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll do that.
So
Just to give something to think about for next time, they don't have to answer it, but I just want to know your thoughts about traffic mitigation. I know you're gonna have the traffic engineer here next time, but I'm not talking about the engineering part, I'm talking about what you can do, you know, from the community side to do your best to mitigate traffic, coordinating with Enfield Transit, perhaps. It's, this property is on the yellow line transit route. Possibly, you know, if you guys have any experience as community builders doing shared rides, shared, you know, rentals, anything of that sort. So, you know, anything to kind of assuage, you know, the public in terms of decreasing your impact on traffic. Instead of, you know, we kind of assume the worst with traffic studies, that's the whole point of them. So what can you do from a conceptual point and an operational point to mitigate it?
Yeah.
So again, I want to thank you, because we'll be seeing you back in probably two weeks, so.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, no, this was, this was very beneficial, thank you. So now we're gonna give the opportunity for a couple of seconds here for the public who signed up to give their comments on this application again tonight. I do want to mention to the other three applicants here in the new business section, I'm sorry, we are running a little bit later than I thought. If you'd like to get up and stretch your legs, we're probably gonna be a little bit longer. So I just want to let you know there's three other applicants waiting after this, so if you wanted to get up and take a browser on the building, please be my guest. We won't start without you when your turn comes. So first person up, again, you have five minutes to speak, and please, I just ask you not to be repetitious from the last time we're here, because, believe me, we did receive and listen to all your comments and took notes the last time we're here, so hopefully you'll have something new to add. So we can move on. Are you okay? Yeah, so yeah, we'll get it later. So we have Nikki Price first.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nikki Price and I reside at 1324 Enfield Street. I'm gonna have my comments, but then I do have a question about procedural and when you receive an email. After reading the master packet regarding PH 3040 MA 1297 Enfield Street application, there were three letters of support for this proposed zone change requested by the Felician Sisters of North America. I would like to note the following. One, date received 24 June 2022 from a sister that resides at 871 Mercer Road, Beaver Falls, Pennsylvania. Two, date received 27 June 2022 from a sister, no address listed. Three, date received 28 June 2022 from a sister that lives at 3800 West Peterson Avenue, Chicago, Illinois. It is obvious that this support is not from members of the Enfield constituency, rather it is a support from within their own organization. Now, I'm glad you talked about the petition because I had something about the petition, but I'm gonna move on. For some in the neighborhood, they chose not to sign the petition or publicly expressed they are against the zone change. Rather, these individuals have chosen to put a sign in front of their home stating they're against the proposed zone change. I would like to submit a few pictures in support of this sentiment. There were 100 signs made and all 100 are posted throughout the neighborhood. Finally, my hope is this governing body has given much forethought regarding the abuser's wishes in not granting this zone change. We not only see the negative impact this transformation will have on our neighborhood, but also the town as a whole. So then I said in closing, I'm against this zone change. Now, the reason why I'm asking it, after reading the master packet, and I have all respect for you guys, because after reading everything, but from the last meeting, I sent an email to the Dare Enfield Planning and Zoning Staff and Commissioners, and I, it is from Friday, July 1st at 9:17 PM. So when I was reading the master packet, I saw the letter, I saw emails listed, and I was wondering, first of all, why my email wasn't listed? And second of all, I never received a reply, not from the staff saying, we received your email, it was passed along to the commissioners, nothing. But I want to put this in the record because I think it's important. From the PH 3040 MA 1297 Enfield Street application meeting of 30th June 2022, would you please answer the following questions? By the way of the commission, the Enfield community public should be made aware of the details of the 99-year ground lease and what effect a sale of the property would have upon that lease. Two, what is the tax revenue for the 99-year ground lease? Who owns the new construction, well, there, three, who owns the new construction and anticipated tax revenue? Four, what outside funding is being applied for and what use? Five, the landowners are the Felician Sisters of North America based in Chicago, not the, not the Felician Sisters of Enfield. That's the question, because I want that on record. Before any zone change vote is taken, a qualitative traffic study must be made to include school traffic, Enfield Congressional Sunday worship, parking on South Road, and et cetera. Now, when I meant et cetera, you have to remember, Enfield Street School is used for a lot of things on the weekend. In other words, they have Relay for Life, they have the Alzheimer's relays. So you have to remember, it's a very busy road and a qualitative work, traffic study must be made. Then I said, would be grateful for a reply before the next meeting of July 14th. I just think from this, from my point of view with the Felician Sisters and their representation to the public and to you, everything is not concrete. There's no concrete numbers. There's all generalities. And in other words, while the Felician Sisters anticipate to be there for the next 99 years and we want them to be there, we all do. But if it does get sale, the, I mean, the land does get sold, the zone change is there permanently, and what effect does this all have on the community? They can't guarantee that 100%. So thank you. I'm gonna submit this to Lori.
Please.
And these are the pictures. Just want to let you know, there's pictures. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please, just submit in to Lori, please. Mr. McDonald?
I spent a lot of time on this, okay?
You have to identify yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim McDonald, 210 South Road. I'm an abuser. I spent a lot of time on this, and I'm strengthening my decision as I go on, okay? Unfortunately, I cannot support this change. And I want to tell you why. Since 1959, 126 historic districts have been designated spanning 72 cities and towns in Connecticut. I feel as though it's our responsibility to preserve and protect. I went into the P O C D, page 185, chapter 9, and it says, reduction of residential densities to maintain character of neighborhood and limit traffic. So I think we're on the same page here, okay? Now, for traffic, in the United States, there's 1.88 vehicles per household. In Connecticut, there's 2.1 vehicles per household. So what I'm looking at, I'm looking at a worst-case scenario, what we can expect. Now, when we went to the info session, info session, there was 140 elderly apartments, 140 mixed-income apartments and multigen. So conservatively, I'm saying, the elderly apartments, we can expect 140 vehicles. Okay, mixed income, Mixed income, we can expect 280 vehicles. Miscellaneous, 60. If we had 50% visitors, we have 140 vehicles. So I'm looking at the possibility of 620 vehicles on this property, okay? These, these are 2020, this is from 2020 census, okay? Now, let me go over to density. In the United States, per household, there's 2.6 people. In Connecticut, there's 2.5 people, okay? Now, multigen has been around since the 1800s, okay? Now, multigen used to be two generations per household, okay? And I go back, I go back, last year, and multigen was brought up in the Wall Street Journal, driven by debt, student debt, okay, student debt and the economy, okay? Now, multigen was two, now three, and it adds plus two per household, okay? So we're looking at 4.5 people. So if I, realistically, if I'm looking at elderly apartments, okay, realistically, if we have two people per apartment, we're looking at 280 people. If we looked at the mixed, mixed-income multigen, we're looking at 630 people, okay? If we have one visitor per apartment, we're looking at 280 people, so we're looking at almost 1,200 people, okay? Now, multigen living, there's pros and cons, okay? The pros are economics and bonding. The cons are less privacy, stressors, and dynamics, okay? That, this is, this is right on, this is open, so you can see it, okay? Now, for my closing statement, we have the potential for 620-plus vehicles, we have the potential for 1,200-plus people, increased density, increased traffic, stress on the emergency services, and we have safety issues, okay? In summary, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't think the historic district is the right neighborhood for this project. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't even, I have something totally written that's different, and I'm going to come back and do that, because right now I just feel like the goalpost was moved in the middle of the game. It's noticed that it's a, it's a zone change for the entire parcel. We're in the middle of the hearings, and then it's half the parcel. And then it's been mentioned that it's in the regulations that we need to have a site plan review alongside of this zone change. And then it's mentioned that, well, now we don't know if we're going to do that, or we're going to say something different. I can't even follow anymore. I, I, they talked one way on this way, one way on this way. I, I just don't even, I don't even get the whole thing anymore. You have, the application is in midstream, we don't have notice to the public. Is it a site plan review and a zone change, or is it not? Because the notice only says it's a zone change. It doesn't talk about the site plan, but it's supposed to be a site plan. I do want to say a couple of comments on the SDD zone, and I agree with Lori. I went back, I have those same books. It is in chapter 22. And then in 2001, there was a revamp of the zoning regs, and there wasn't any public hearings. They had it noticed for eight months, and then they never had a public hearing on the stuff in, in the book. Then when it came down time to vote the new regulations in, Commissioner Howard stated he would prefer to see this continued as opposed to voting on it tonight, that the commission had new members coming on and some fresh ideas, and they might, they may not be heard. Commissioner Dentamaro stated he was inclined to vote against it because he does not like unfinished business to be voted on. He felt there was always room for misinterpretation, even from the town attorney, who could or could not give the commission the appropriate information. He'd like to see a clean copy of the revision prior to voting on it. They never had it. They voted on that whole thing without ever having public hearings, but it happened. We can't go back in time to say, all as I can say is, this is the way the regulation book is now. We don't have that history to say, well, why did they do this? They didn't have the public hearings. So I, I agree where, where that's an issue. And then I really want to talk about 359 Hazard Avenue, because Commissioner Alamo, you just said on it that it was a special design district. But then the staff reports that was put out to the public said it was a planned design special permit, that it was in the design district of the overlay. So was it actually a special design district? Because that's not the way that was noticed either. And this is a staff report. So I'm like hearing different things, and it just seems like it's, it's pretty, like, all over the place, and I don't think any of us can really follow what's going on. And my last thing is more complexed, and it's well-written, and I would like to come back and read that because it's specifically on the Blair Manor property.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anthony Spazzerini, 40 Post Office Road, Enfield. Under section 5.60 of the Special Design District Regulations under Procedure, it says that for the application of a special development district, it shall be both a zone change and site plan review procedures. Then if you go to your site plan review section, you will know it is clearly not a site plan review when there is no contours or grades, buildings with dimensions or elevations, floor plans, sanitary sewers, stormwater management, et cetera. It appears that even though this is a 40-plus million-dollar nonprofit project that is for the sole benefit of the Felician Sisters of North America and community builders, they still did not spend any money for a site plan. Anyone who hasn't figured out that this is a cash cow for the community builders is naive. The nuns won't be participating in any of the management, they are just collecting a check from the land lease. It's the neighborhood and the town that will be harmed by this project if it goes forward. I have been in construction my whole life. The information on this application is not adequate for any site plan review. I don't see how you could vote any other way than no. Thank you.
Okay. Ann Marie Galrini?
Galbetsy.
Okay, I couldn't tell that. That's right. Yeah, I remember you from last time. Yes. Sorry, sorry, Ann. I was better last time than sorry, Ann Marie.
You were pretty close compared to most people. So I have prepared something based on the information that was up on-
Your name and address, Ann. Your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
My name's Ann Marie Galbetsy, 1330 Enfield Street.
Thank you.
I have prepared something based on what was on the web, up on the site, so I don't know if it pertains to the ideas now that they're moving the line back. But the way I understand it, it's still considered a whole parcel, and this zone change would still be, would have still affect the whole parcel, even though the existing plan today is not to build, is not to build past that line. So I live at 1330 Enfield Street and own the property with my sister. I've lived there most of my life. The historic district is a separate creation of the state of Connecticut that was brought to the town of Enfield. A referendum was initiated and voted upon by the people of the district. It was passed with an overwhelming favor to create the historic district. This district was created and established in 1972 by an ordinance. The definition of an ordinance is an authoritative decree or direction, a law set forth by the governmental authority of specifically a municipal regulation, municipal regulation, as from the dictionary, Merian and Weber. How does the Planning and Zoning Commission change an R 33 district that was done by a town ordinance and create a new SDD zone without going back to the district voters? Can an SDD be created in a residential or historical zone? According to the Enfield zoning regulations, it should be based on the historic district regulation and authority because it was formed through an ordinance and accepted by a vote of the district. The planning commission should not be able to overrule a vote by the district. The ordinance, the ordinance also states, and I reference a letter from the state attorney from 2008, which I included in my, which I include in my documentation. The purchase or convenience of a home in the historic district prior to the creation of the district does not exempt the property owner from the regulations of the district. That was something that was brought up in the first meeting two weeks ago. I also like to quote the local historic, local historic district and property commission in Connecticut in the section referencing the Enfield Historic District Overview from 2011. I also have a link to that, that publication in my documentation. The, the quote is, "While several of the buildings do have outstanding merit, it is the collective presence that gives significance to the district. The church, the town hall, the Thompson Mansion are outstanding architecture and are important to the history of Enfield. But it is the range of more than 100 houses up and down the street that demonstrate the development of domestic lit building and living arrangements in New England over three centuries," end quote. For me, it is important to preserve this history of our town. It shapes the overall presence and attitude that I, and I know my neighbors, want to live and preserve. Just drive up and down Enfield Street, South Road, Post Office Road, and compare it to other parts of town. This will visually confirm, confirm what I'm trying to convey. Do not change the zone for this property in, in question to a SDD zone. I feel if you do, it provides the current and any future owner free range to build and establish any type of residential, retail, training center, or other types of commercial buildings. I, I'm not sure, but I don't know if they would have to come to the zoning board for every new building that they'd want, but I don't, from what I read, I don't believe they do. I did have a question that I want to make sure that it, I still haven't heard a clarification that, I know they want to move the line back, as they showed in that picture, I think that you showed, sir, that they want to move the line back and they're going to preserve that historic area. But does that separate then the back part, let's say the back part of a property, and that we're only looking at that for them to build on? Because if it does, then that even decreases the area in which they're building these apartments or multi-generational living conditions, so that, that the unit per acre is going to even increase more than what they're already projecting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ellen Martin, 6 Patricia Circle here in Enfield. And I agree with Lori Longi, who presented before I did. I'm totally confused. You have criteria that is set up that needs to be met with the SDD designation. I don't know what buildings they're talking about. I don't know what buildings they're not talking about. They're referring to buildings in the narrative that they're not including now. Now it's only two buildings, before it was five buildings. You can't come up with total gross area to develop, to, to come up with whether or not it's an 80% vacancy or a 20% vacancy, when you don't know how many buildings are being talked about. I'm really confused, totally. So I'm going to skip over that section because I do believe you need to do your due diligence and find out what buildings are being talked about, what the exact area is of it, what's used and not used, what's used for storage, what's not used for storage. You don't have to live in something to have a use of it. Having stuff installed in that building is still considered a use. So I think you, as a commission, saw the pictures better than I did back there because they were facing you, to have an explanation of that. So I'm going to leave that on your plate for, for the criteria C in, in that 80% vacancy. What I am going to talk about is the few other things that have to do with the criteria. One is under E, as far as a substantial benefit to the town. The attorney mentioned that we need more affordable housing in Enfield, and by doing their proposed 10-year project, they will begin to meet that need. Maybe we should look at things that are already approved by this commission. 153 South Road, an elderly residential complex with 96 units. 359 Hazard Avenue, which was having 10 apartments in it. Enfield Gardens with 19 units that I think is going to be starting to build in December. Blair Manor, 40 units. George Washington Road, zone change, approval for multifamily housing. Not sure of how many units that's going to, but that's going to add to the total, too. The Strand and the Angel Amagna Center, I think is 40 units that they're planning down there. Good place for it because it's by the train station, which we want to get going. These consist of over 200 units, not including what's on George Washington Road, already approved, already in the hopper, without the necessity of changing the historic district. And keep in mind, please, Enfield currently has over 12% affordable housing, which does not include the already approved. We actually have 12.72 qualified affordable housing, which ranks Enfield ninth out of 169 municipalities for percentage affordable. Enfield is providing its share, its regional share of affordable housing. That's why the government in Enfield wants to spread it around. Every town should provide 10%, at least. Enfield ranks ninth. Why are we going to start putting more housing like that in Enfield when you already have over 200 units in the hopper, approved, without touching the historical zone? Let's not forget when they talked about what the PC and D said. He, the attorney for the sisters, came up and said, there's a few points that they can turn around and, and reference to the historic district, saying that they could do what they want to do. But let's not forget, it's, this is a little part of the bigger picture in our town. It's history, and the town PC and D reminds us of that. When you look at the section under historic district, which their attorney didn't mention, the accomplishments include reduction of the residential zoning densities to maintain the character of the neighborhood, limit traffic, and have the creation of a local historic district to ensure that modification to the historic properties are consistent with preservation standards. The project being proposed will increase residential density, and it will increase traffic. I was going to say to 9.3 units, but I don't know if that's true anymore. Prior to establishing the town's fourth special development district, I hope that the commission will first do their due diligence and remember, the historic district is not just a small part of our town, but it's a part of our town's history. Please take pause. Please reflect on the fact that those commissioners who came before you had enough sense to want to preserve and protect that history by creating our historic district. There are other options available to the sisters by special permit, which would not require a zone change. It won't give them the multi-generational, but they can do other important, needed- It won't give them the multi-generational, but they can do other important needed things with their property by special permit without zone change. I don't know if that's been looked into.
Ellen, your time is up. You can come back if you'd like.
All right. I will.
Mary Ellen Delusio.
I'll try and edit to not be redundant. Good evening, and thank you for your patience and attention to the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We've heard many reasons why drastic zoning change from HR-33 to SDD will benefit the Felician sisters of Chicago, who represent the Good Sisters at 1297 Enfield Street, and the community builders of Boston. However, a primary condition for allowing this zoning change is to benefit the town. This is not clear to me at all. Removing a prominent section of the historic district, shrinking the size of the historic zone, and essentially turning a prominent historical property into a commercial development zone is not a benefit to the town, or certainly not a benefit to the historic district. I fail to see the benefit to the Enfield Montessori School. In fact, I see a detriment, one that must be addressed by this zoning board. The zoning board must take into consideration the safety of the Enfield Montessori School children. The sisters sealed the fate of their property when the decision was made to move the school to its current location. Now the safety of the children must come first. Where is the school zone? Would you, as a zoning board, allow a multi-use affordable housing project on any school property in Enfield? I don't think so. So why would you allow it here? Clearly, the schoolchildren will come in contact with other property residences. How will it be ensured that this interaction will be safe? We all know there's quite a process involved when people are associating with schoolchildren, and the Hartford Diocese has strict guidelines for this. There are strict federal laws about guns within 1,000 feet of a school. Since the apartments fall under the guidelines of private property, there's no way to enforce this. The playground will be in front of the property, visible to the traffic on Route 5, and there are plans for a kitchen and a medical facility. We really don't have any idea what that is. It seems inappropriate, given the location to the school. In considering the zoning change, it's about the land, not the landowner. And this isn't stated in Michael Zicka's book, What Is Legally Required? And he's considered an expert in this area and approved to teach classes to members of zoning boards. And I quote, "Financial considerations are rarely a valid reason for issuing a variance. The possible economic advantage to the landlord is not sufficient. The fact that the proposed use will not be detrimental and may even be beneficial to the neighborhood is not sufficient. The hardship must arise from the operation of the regulation on the land, not the landowner, and the land must be particularly disadvantaged by the regulation for which the variance is sought. In addition, the hardship must not be self-created. The landowner must not have taken any action to cause the hardship to occur." A zone change in a variance is basically the same thing. Unfortunately, we must look and consider the fact that the sister's situation was indeed self-created. As good as the deeds of the sisters are, the financial planning was not sufficient. This is not the town and the residents' problem to solve. In fact, it's quite clear to me that SDD zones cannot be used in an HR-33 historic residential zone, and therefore, this application should not even be in front of the zoning board. I own, along with my sister, 1330 Enfield Street, which is directly across the street. We pay our taxes, maintain our property. We are not tax-exempt like the 22 apartments at Safe Francis Residence, and I don't have a problem with that. My objection is the fact that this zoning change gives this property special treatment, treatment no abutting property owner would ever get. In fact, this zoning change is very out of line with the abutting property owners and the neighboring area that one has to wonder if it does not meet the criteria of spot zoning. And I could go on about spot zoning, but it's in my application here. Since a property will be moved from the historic residential district, it creates a new district directly juxtaposed to the surrounding zoning district. And since it's against the Enfield Planning Zone Plan of Conservation, that states the density of the historic district should be reduced, this does not meet the criteria of spot zoning. This current application must be weighed against spot zoning criteria, and I believe you will find it as a valid concern. Also, seriously, is there anyone in this room that doesn't understand what the word "character" means, especially the "character" of a historic district? That sounds to me like legal speak and a way to confuse the issue. And if there are legislatures in Hartford that doesn't know what "character" of a historic district is, I'd be happy to explain it to them. Let's not go along with maybe this little sideshow on what is and what isn't "character." Everyone here knows what the "character" of a historic district is. It's obvious. And you can't tell me that living across the street from a construction job for 10 years is not going to affect my property value and all the property values on Enfield Street. And I think that's my basic information here tonight. Thank you very much.
Donna Duenowski, 23 Betty Road. All right, let's all agree that changing the zone from the historic district to an SDD will certainly change the historic district forever. Many call this property the gem or the jewel of Enfield. One can reasonably expect that surrounding homes and the town overall will be harmed by this zone change. The design district will change the density of the neighborhood and then can affect the values of the surrounding homes in this area. Site characteristics that have the greatest effect on value is location and view. I know everyone's heard the term "location, location, location." Properties located nearest to this change in zone will likely have the most impact. Homes purchased in the historic district have special buyers who want to preserve the character of these beautiful architectural styles, like the 19th-century farmhouse or the early 20th-century Queen Anne and the Spanish colonial revival. All these homes are unique and should be treated with respect of their history. If, in fact, this zone change were to be approved, the values of the homes in the surrounding neighborhoods can also be greatly affected by this change under the criteria of the change E, that it has provided a substantial benefit to the town in an immediate neighborhood. And the other reason I'd ask that this application not move forward is, again, we are competing with the Enfield Housing Authority for funding, and that's why they want it to be multigeneral, rational. So it does put our Enfield Housing Authority, it puts our own agency at risk, and that is not a benefit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Suzak.
Donna Suzak, 35 South Road, and intend to speak tonight. I guess for me, the question that, I haven't reviewed everything, but I'm looking for percentage of this housing that would be designated to be used by the Felician sisters for the perpetuity of this project, because I feel that the presence of the sisters is what gives the atmosphere to the site itself and to the work that's done. And if I don't see that there is a specific designation for a percentage of this housing that will be specifically for the sisters, then I don't feel that there's a commitment for them to stay multi-generational. I mean, we need new generations to come in of regular citizens and of our sisters. And also, it was mentioned, there is another housing that has been approved that would dump traffic out onto South Road, Little History of South Road, widest road in Enfield, deepest town road. It also has a bike lane that has taken 40 years to get it designated. I do not want to see that disappear from that road. And I guess the keepers of South Road need to be aware that, you know, South Road needs to be perhaps kept with a clean eye, because I think, you know, dumping all that traffic out, plus the other housing that has been approved on South Road, you need to really look at that traffic study. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lori Longi, you come back for your second time?
Lori Longi, 1427 Enfield Street. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for letting me come back. At the last meeting, it was mentioned that Blair Manor was in a residential district, R-44, that turned into the SDD district. But that property was not in any way similar to this application. First, it was done with a virtual meeting during COVID. The properties across the street and next door to Blair Manor were all in the Skidco Design Overlay District. We know that the overlay zones are more flexible zones with mixed use. The properties directly east and south of Blair Manor are the State of Connecticut, which is 123 acres, and the western abutter was the Connecticut Water Company, 13 acres. The zoning density actually went down, they said, to 5.1 units per acre in the area. It had been empty for several years, and the building was deteriorated. They submitted a complete set, a site plan's drainage report, a current traffic study, and an environmental report, floor plans, and they paid for both, a zone change and a site plan review, and I have a copy of that. The chairman disagreed when the engineer said there would be no increase in traffic for the 43 units. The chairman said there would be increased traffic. The chairman actually said he thought it was spot zoning, similar to what somebody just mentioned. The chairman asked three times if anyone wanted to speak in favor or against the application. Not one person came forward. That in itself is a major difference from this application. The neighborhood is speaking out. The Blair Manor application had the State of Connecticut and the Connecticut Water Company as abutters, plus garages, apartments, McDonald's, a mall, a package store, a gas station, and then the few houses across the street that were actually in the Design Overlay District. That property may have been residential, but the area was more commercial. The simple and plain reading of the regulations is that the SDD is not supposed to be used in a residential zone, as the tables are only in the business section. The 1297 Enfield Street property is in the historic district, surrounded by residential houses. It's not in an overlay zone. There are four industrial properties that abut this application, but they are located on the other side of Interstate 91. They count as abutters, but they typically don't speak. It's clear to me that when the applicant talks about density at 9.3, and they do mention the multifamily housing district, they forget that that particular district is required to have 60 acres. They can't compare themselves to the multifamily housing zone because they don't have the correct acres. They only have 25 acres. I remember writing that regulations, and we were very specific to a minimum of 60 acres, and that is why the density was allowed to be so high at 10. They have less than half the acres. Yes, they want to be almost equal in density, but in the Plan of Conservation and Development, the historic section says to reduce the density and reduce traffic. Clearly, if you allow this zone change, you will be allowing a greater density and increased traffic. They want you to focus on the narrative, which is housing, but it's been proven that Enfield already has enough. There is housing approved, not yet built. Approved by you, but not yet built. These are the reasons that it's not good for Enfield. It doesn't make sense to me that we need to change a zone for a particular group to benefit them. They have other options, but choose not to do them. We don't have enough answers on the exact height of these buildings. In our district, the maximum height is 2 and 1/2 stories. We don't have architectural plans, parking or circulation, and many of the requirements that are needed to make an informed decision. At the last hearing, I touched on parking. I said the applicant is proposing 0.75 of a parking spot. That's not even one spot per apartment. I mentioned in the residential section, there's two parking spots required, and age restricted is also two parking spots. Going back into the minutes of the apartments approved for Blair Manor, they also used two spots.
Lori, you have one minute.
And 359 Hazard Avenue also used two spots. With 250 apartments, they need 500 spots just for the apartments. They propose 154 spots, including the Montessori School. The issues are endless. This is not a site plan review. Based upon these facts, I can only hope you do the right thing and vote down this change. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ellen Martin for the second time.
Ellen Martin, 6 Patricia Circle. Thank you, and I am almost done. As I said, there are other options for the sisters by special permit, which would not require a zone change. They choose not to go that route because they want to do what they would like to do. Alls I can say is, your job is a big one, and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. Ensure the criteria of the special district is met. And in order to do that, you need information, valid information. And what I saw tonight was a show, a big show, because everything's changed. I don't know which end is up anymore. Look around you here tonight. There are many residents who oppose this zone change. Look on the roads near the proposed project. Signs tell you the same thing. There are many residents who oppose this zone change. Please, please protect our historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. And that'll end our session of public communication tonight. As I've stated before, pardon, yes.
There are a few comments that I'd like to make before this evening closes. I'll keep it under five minutes.
Okay. Are you answering back questions, Attorney Landelina, or?
I'm answering issues raised by the public. Because there seems to be...
Please, stop. We don't have any of that from the gallery, please. Thank you.
Again, for the record, Attorney Carl Landelina. There seems to be a basic misunderstanding about what it is we're doing here, and it's been carried over from last time to today. There is a difference between the HR-33 zone in your zoning regulations and the historic district. They are not the same thing. You understand it. Apparently, the folks in back do not. So I want to bring this to their attention and to your attention, to the extent that some of you may confuse them. They are not the same thing. We have never planned to do anything within the historic district. And as a result of the comments made last time, we moved our zone line out of that area to accommodate and allay any concerns that they had. Obviously, we weren't successful in that, but, and I understand, we can disagree on the other components, you know, the vague, you know, interpretational stuff, whether it's compatible and benefit and all of that, right? That's your bailiwick. But most of the comments I heard tonight is that we're going to ruin the historic district. We're not doing anything in the historic district. We don't plan to. And the references to the POCD regarding the historic district are not relevant. All right? Those chapters aren't relevant here. We're not doing anything in the historic district. But I just, again, and I just want to take one more minute, and let me read for everyone in this room tonight the things that are allowed in this zone as we sit here today, and tell me whether or not that fits what the public believes to be the historic part of this property. In this zone, I can have accessory apartments, agricultural activities, bread and breakfast ends, boarding and rooming houses, cemeteries, child and adult daycare facilities, commercial and recreational vehicles or boats can be placed in the HR-33. Community residence for mentally retarded persons, probably a term you're going to change in your next go-around. That's permitted as a right without anything from you guys. Continuing care retirement communities, family and group daycare facilities, farms, government buildings and offices and facilities, helicopter landing places. I could build a heliport here. Home occupations and home professional offices, multifamily residential uses, nonprofit homeless shelters and housing, nonprofit residential housing, places of work... homeless shelters and housing, nonprofit residential housing, places of worship, public utility buildings and facilities, renting of rooms to no more than two guests, schools, public and private, single-family residences, solar energy systems. We could tear this place down and get a solar farm there. Swimming pools, garden, and we have accessory undertaking and funeral businesses. And a matter of fact, it appears from your use table, that's the only zone where undertakers or funeral homes are allowed. It doesn't make sense to me, but that's what's in your table. Wireless communication facilities. That's what's allowed right now without a zone change. So they're saying, people are saying, well, pick something else. Okay, maybe we'll pick from that list. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, as I said before, we're continuing this to the July 28th meeting. I think it's July 28th, if I'm not correct. We're going to leave the public hearing open, because there's still much more discussion needs to occur. And as I mentioned before when we first started, there's a lot of review by our legal staff and others, staff and even Attorney Landelina is involved. We have some open-ended issues that we're looking for guidance on from our legal staff that we have yet to receive. So we've heard many comments tonight about SDD in the wrong section and not, you know, is it just for business, not residential? We also have a lot of comments tonight about why this particular application did not be submitted to us with what I would call a traditional site plan. I think some of you are aware, we can waive that requirement and go to the more master plan if we wanted to. I'm not advocating we discuss that tonight. I would advocate that we wait to get some legal guidance on that. So again, that is in the works. So I want to let the Commissioners know and the community know that some of these are still open-ended items. And believe me, I think some, one resident came up here and said they were dizzy with what's going on. Well, I just came back from vacation. I came in at about 11, 12 o'clock last night. Five days of relaxing, get out of town for a little bit, and thinking about this every day. Yeah, and even I got dizzy trying to figure out just how to manage this meeting with all these still open-ended questions that are going on. That's not, you know, kind of not fair, fair for the Commission, for staff, for the applicant, for the community. We totally understand, and it's just one of those applications that has a lot of question marks. We have some holes in our regulations that we have identified through this process that, as I mentioned before, hopefully, the Commission will take some consideration out when we do that review in the end of the year and tighten some of that up. So I'm not making excuses. I'm just telling you what it is. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion tonight to keep this public hearing open and table this until July 28th.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, to keep this public hearing open and to continue this in our next meeting on July 28th at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much, everybody.
Do you want to vote?
All those in favor? Let us show that it was unanimous. We will take a two-minute break, because we have some other applicants, just so the room can get cleared. Call this meeting back to order. Thank you very much, everybody. Everybody's all set? New business, FLD 44. 4555 Cottage Road, application for demolition and construction of a single-family home with a two-car garage. Randy and Stacy Daigle, owners, applicants, MAP 80, Lot 55, R33 Zone, Lake Overlay District. The applicant and representative, please identify themselves.
Hi there, I'm Randy Daigle of 55 Cottage Road, and we just want to build a house, that's all.
And you are?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Choate from Design Professionals, a registered professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Sorry if I mess a word or two up, I'm a little... It's been a little bit of a long night.
And I just need to add one thing before you start, just for my fellow Commissioners, and this particular application is probably most of you are aware, the Commission is acting in its capacity as the town's flood management authority and not as the planning and zoning commission. Please.
Correct, yes. No, that's okay. 55 Cottage Road, I'm sorry, I'm just not with it. The existing property has a house on it that we are proposing to demolish and build a new house. The entire property is in the flood zone. No construction, no activity is taking place in the floodway, but in the flood zone. So the first floor elevation will be one foot above the 500-year flood elevation, and we are actually, by doing the construction and some grading around the house, providing extra flood storage. The cumulative additional flood storage is about 65 cubic yards. So that is certainly not detrimental. The house will be built on helical piers. And I'll show you the house just to... So you can see what the house looks like, so that it doesn't affect the flood elevation at all. That's all I have to say.
Anything you want to add, Randy?
No, we're just answer any questions. It's just, you know, it's a regular house. It's going to be on piers, which will allow the water to flow. We're actually, by raising it up currently, it has different types of piers and blockages and such, but by raising it up, we're actually receiving, we're increasing the amount of floodwater that stays on the parcel than we currently have. So it's a positive thing, basically. But we are using a system called helical piers instead of the concrete ones, which are used around in water sources and down by the shorelines.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Alamo?
So, Randy, you were before us last year, did that... Did you pull that application, just so...
Yeah, well, before, when I did it, we were going to add on to the existing house.
I remember, yeah, something.
But in order to add on, we'd have to put the addition one foot above floodplains. So that would mean anything we did would be about two and a half feet higher than the existing floor. And then since we started to figure out we're going to have to raise the existing floor, it was so labor-intensive to do that, that it's cheaper to knock it down. It would have cost about $65,000 to raise it, and it's costing us $10,000 to knock it down.
So just to be clear, you withdrew that, and now this is new?
We withdrew that, yeah. We spent $1,280 on applications and all that, and then we withdrew that. And since it's considered new construction, we were required to do a survey, a full survey, and then this is where we are.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, remember, it's off the dock, it's gone away, that other one, and we're looking at something completely new.
About 15 months' worth of this, though.
You're still on it. Thank you for your answers. Appreciate it, thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns?
So...
Commissioner Holinsky, go ahead.
So, I don't know if this is appropriate...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but how long is it going to take to do all this?
Well, we should probably, the demo part's going to say, the house, the current house is a small cottage, as they all are back then, before they started renovating. That period's going to take a week in order to clear everything off, disposable. We did get asbestos abatement and lead survey done and all that, and there is no contamination, so it's going in regular dumpsters. So that should take a week. The entire construction, we're hoping, is going to take seven months for us to move back in.
Disagreement there.
Look what she did, Ken.
All right, seeing, what other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve FLD number 44 with conditions, as stated in the memo here. I think there are, I'm seeing...
23.
23 conditions in accordance with the town motion dated... That would be July 14, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky, to approve this application, FLD 44. Any discussion on a motion? Seeing on roll call whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
Second. Seem to lost my book here. Lou Fiore?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Francis Alamo?
Four.
Kieran Majmudar?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Thank you. Seeing that was a unanimous decision, seven to nothing to approve this application. You're all set, Mr. Daigle?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
I, just to protect ourselves, I don't think we're going to need it, but I would entertain a motion that we go past the 11 o'clock time period if so need be tonight. Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, to, if needed, to extend this meeting past 11 o'clock. All those in favor?
Aye.
Saying aye, let us show that it was unanimous, that if we so need be, we will go past 11 o'clock. Now we'll go on to SPR 1895. I don't see anything to read here. Application for a site plan modification to eliminate a curb cut. Guy Burns, applicant, 238 Shaker Road LLC, owner MAP 94, Lot 14, I-2 Zone. Evening. Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Guy Burns.
Address, please?
Nine Lake Lane, Ellington.
Can you tie that again?
Guy Burns, Nine Lake Lane.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Could you just give us a brief overview of what you'd like to do?
I'm looking to get rid of a curb cut on, at 238 Shaker Road. Right now, there's presently three curb cuts that I want to eliminate one and extend the island in front, making it from two to one, and put in new plantings and just clean the property up, basically, in the front.
Before we start, because I actually read through this, it was still well-done, but would staff like to add some to this?
Well, there, it's unfortunate that it's complicated as it ends up being, but the site is prior lawful nonconforming almost in every single respect. It was done back in, maybe in the 60s or something originally. And so finding some archival information was a bit of a challenge. Once we did, we were able to kind of look at how the changes in the front might affect, like, parking, and the resolution we came up with is that that front area, after the curb cut is closed, is just going to be like a two-way drive. It's going to be a little bit wider.
Right.
In the future, if he wants to maybe do some parking on there, we can look at some different options, but for now, this will at least get him going with getting rid of the curb cut. In terms of the plantings and landscaping, it's all in the state right of way, so the state's going to have to, you know, approve, disapprove. So I can't promise it's going to look like the pretty picture that we have, but at least the sight lines and things, we'll make sure to take care of those. That's about it.
There is quite a few conditions. There are some site-specific conditions here, and I guess I'm looking, I mean, you're aware of the site-specific conditions. I know you've worked with staff.
Yep. Yeah, the fire marshal wanted the area cleared around the hydrant.
Yeah, I've already made all the notes and changes, and, you know, I'm waiting for my encroachment permit so I can do the work out there.
That's all.
Any other questions for any other Commissioners? Commissioner Alamo? Everybody's good? The secretary kind of make the motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve SPR number 1895, 238 Shaker Road, site plan modification to eliminate curb cut, 238 Shaker Road LLC owner, Guy Burns, applicant MAP 94, Lot 14, subject to the conditions and modifications as listed. There are 21 conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner DeGray or Vice Chairman DeGray, for a motion to approve with all the 21, I saw, conditions. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing, whenever the secretary's ready, for roll call.
Lou Fiore?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Francis Alamo?
Four.
Kieran Majmudar?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Thank you. Seeing, it looks, it passed unanimous. It was a unanimous decision, so you're all set, Mr. Burns. Good luck with your project, good luck with the state. Now, certainly not, last but not least... Well, you did get to go to... You did get to learn a lot here tonight, I guess. Why don't you come on up? We're next with SPR 1898, 95 High Street.
Mr. Chair, I gotta excuse myself.
Commissioner Majmudar is going to recuse himself from this, so Commissioner Lefakis is his turn. You're in on this application. Did you guys get that okay? Okay. Commissioner Lefakis will be sitting in for Commissioner Majmudar. SPR 1898-95 High Street, application for site plan modification for the expansion of use of the restaurant. Bertu Chavez, I hope I'm sorry, applicant, Melina El... Bertu Chavez, sorry, applicant, Molina LLC owner, map 25, lot 6, TD5. Just briefly, yeah, I think we know what we're doing, but identify yourself for the record and then briefly.
Hopefully, my voice, it's okay. It's cold. My name is Maria Chavez, manager at Serapis. Good part of it's my mom. She cannot be here tonight. We, yeah, looking for a permit to expand the restaurant, just to give a little more service and grow our income, obviously. That's what we requesting, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Higley?
I think it's a great idea. I'm glad that you're expanding, and I wish you lots of luck if it gets approved.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And just for the record, I, I'm sorry, just for the record, it sounds like you're just going to blow out a doorway to get into another.
Yep.
Building next that join you.
Yes, you know, we was going to do the last building on the plaza, but it was too expensive to do it. But luckily, the next door, the grocery went out.
Yeah.
So, it's right there. Yep.
Any questions from the commission? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve SPR 1898, 95 High Street, application for site plan modification to allow the expansion of Serapis Restaurant. Further reference plans and application support materials of record and the 15 conditions as noted.
Yes, is there a second? Motion made by Commissioner, Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Lefakis to approve this application. Any discussion? Seeing, whenever you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
Lou Fiore?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Francis Alamo?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
Nick Lefakis?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Thank you. Seeing it was a unanimous decision, all seven of us with Commissioner Lefakis sitting in, approved that. So, you are all set. And thank you for waiting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for waiting.
I learned.
Three hours, yeah. Thank you. And good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Yeah. I guess Karan could come back in. Can you guys see him through the door, or?
See, I told you, it would be 10:13.
You might not even have time to sit down. All right, there's no old business. Other business?
Withdraw.
Yeah, I guess she just wants to say for the record.
There are just two applications that needed to be withdrawn. One was temporary trailer. They made application for something that they couldn't have.
Yep.
And that was at, basically, at Target. And at the Two Suri Lane, again, they made an application for an accessory apartment, but they didn't qualify. So, they're withdrawing their application.
Okay, thank you. I'm really glad that the Target thing got rectified too, so that's, that's good news. Glad that's done. Any correspondence? Any commissioners? Yes, commissioners' correspondence?
I haven't seen anything. The commission for withdrawals. Sorry, we're just talking, we're talking process. I was like, should I make an motion?
I think Commissioner DeGray has a, has a request that she.
Withdrawal, or?
We're going to get nachos after.
There we go.
Oh, okay.
She's open.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner DeGray, I think, has a.
Just a request to get an updated list of contaminated properties in town. I have a list that was given to me when I first got on the board, but I'm sure there's other commissioners that don't have that. So, whenever a property does come before us, that'd be.
When you say contaminated, you mean?
Properties that have contaminations on them that have not been cleaned up yet.
So, is this like the Brownfields list?
Brownfields, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's the only one that I know of that.
Right.
Is like a.
Yeah, there's, there's some properties that have just, they're just sitting there, but if somebody were to purchase them, so, it's a good, it's a good list to have.
DEP.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that doesn't have to be presented to us formally, just the next packet.
Yeah, no, we'll get it, get it tomorrow.
I thought most of it has been cleaned up, though.
At most, but there are some still small, you know, individual little properties. But it's always a good thing to know. And also, when, if they have been cleaned up, when they got cleaned up. Thank you.
Any other correspondence or questions? Right, no? All set?
Thank you.
Director of Planning report?
Well, we've been busy, but what else is new? Right now, my big problem is getting recording secretaries and hiring the admin three, which was Cheryl Eckenroth, which, well, the town manager kind of stole her from us, so, which I'm very happy for her. And, but, yeah, so we're, we're in the process of doing, we will be doing interviews in the next few weeks. So, hopefully we'll get full staff again. And recording secretaries, because we actually need some extras anyway, so. And I forgot to say, and I felt bad, last meeting was Liz, Liz Boulay's last time as your recording secretary. So, she's now no longer employed here, so she resigned for another job, so.
And it did go out to, that did get posted, that job, so it's, it's.
Yeah, I've got, I think I've got four applications right now for recording secretaries. So, I think we'll find somebody soon. So, your next minutes are going to be very scant, by the way, because we have to do them.
Do you want to give us a quick, a very quick, because I know we want, on the POCD status, where you think we're heading and.
So, right now, we're asking all of the people on the steering committee for all of their comments and recommendations for the elements of, you know, the goals and, implementation strategies. I'm going to be going through the last POCD, making sure we haven't missed anything. And, you know, we're hoping to get this pretty much wrapped up by the end of summer, early fall. We are tentatively going to have a, a public meeting in Thompsonville. We're thinking of having it at Mr. Tellarita's new home in the garage area and have it very, you know, interactive, rather than, you know, speaking to everybody. It's like, probably have a lot of boards and maybe, you know, you know, pick, pick things or put the dots on the things that you like or stuff like that. So, still in the works, but we're thinking, there's a couple dates in August that we had tentatively thought about, but I have, I don't remember what they are right now.
Okay. Because we do want to get this in front of you in September.
Yeah.
Because it has to go in front of the council, and I think there has to be public hearing on it, the whole, if I remember correctly, I'm getting dust in the cobwebs here.
Yeah, it actually is, can be a three-month process for review, but I don't think that they're taking that long anymore.
And then we have to, of course, we have to do regulation review, which we really want to get working on too around, in our holidays or right after the holidays. We've got, you know, more things, we talked about a couple things just tonight, right, let alone the other stuff.
Yeah.
That we need, yeah, please.
On the POCD, I know because of COVID and other issues, we're, we're late. It's over, our other one's over 10 years old. The question is, when we approve this, does it back to the ending date of our current one, or do we get 10 years from now forward?
No, I believe it's 10 years from the adoption date.
Okay, thank you.
So, so our future commissioner just bought two years.
Boom.
Any other opportunities or unresolved issues? Anybody want to discuss? No? Receipt of any applications you wanted to mention at all or need to?
No receipt of applications. We have no applications.
So, at this point, it looks like the fleecing system will be the only thing on the next agenda?
No.
Oh, no, there's a couple of the things, but we don't have any new applications.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There's the, the tax amendment for the.
Tax amendment for the curb cut.
The curb cut on Hazard Avenue.
So, they still want to come forward?
They're still coming.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I, I believe so, as of right now, but things could change tomorrow.
Okay.
What was the other one? I don't know, there was some other minor one, I think.
Okay. Seeing that?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to adjourn this meeting at, on July 14.
10:20.
No, 14th, at 10:20. All those in favor, yeah, all those in favor of adjourning? Seeing my saying aye?
Aye.
The records show it was unanimous. Meeting is over. Thank you.